Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is May 11th, 2024. We have 120 voters present. The quorum has been satisfied. The time is somewhere after nine. Can't see that far. The tellers have been sworn to Mr. Basler, Mr. Cullavan, and Ms. Hickey. The warrant has been previously declared and properly noticed with the constable's return of service. As tradition dictates, I waive the reading of the warrant. At this time, could Chief Holmes come forward? Where is he? Sir, could you just take a moment and introduce yourself to everybody?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Holmes, Police Chief.
Speak into the mic.
Brian Holmes, Police Chief. I'm happy to be here at town meeting. Thank you all for being here. The town doesn't go without this process. I would like to recognize and thank Lieutenant Tom Kelly. I know that the people that have been exposed to him in the police department, he's left his indelible mark on them because he is a staunch leader in the Kingston Police Department. Friday, we did a quick lunch for Lieutenant Kelly. He's a humble guy. He's not a guy that wants recognition, but we can't, we can't not recognize the man for 37 years of service. Prior to my arrival, he was the acting chief. The man has done 37 years of service to this town. He proudly served in the Massachusetts Army National Guard 772 Military Police Company for several years. And Monday will be his final radio call. It's something that we do within the department exclusively. So for that, I would like to offer a round of applause for Lieutenant Tom Kelly of the Kingston Police Department. And while you're standing, I would ask you to remain standing as you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd also like to take a moment of silence for those who have passed, for those residents who continue to find strength, resilience, and courage to endure these political, economic, and social challenges facing not only our town, but our state and our country. So the rules of town meeting, I'm going to go through them. First off, all non-registered voters minus children should be up in the front right or the bottom left over here where I'm pointing. It's marked. Town meeting is run per town meeting time in our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to the microphone. Wait to be recognized. State your name and your address. There's a microphone dial there, microphone there as well, too. Please keep your comments under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, but with only new information. Please keep these comments to under one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issue affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, or integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interferes with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you're trying to speak at the microphone. Please stay out of the doorways. They have to be cleared at all times, or I get yelled at. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you may not debate and then make a motion. Please be respectful to everyone. Remember, it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules?
Yes.
Does everyone know where the exits are? Does everyone know the bathrooms are in the hallway? All right, so we know where we're going and we know what we're doing. Does somebody have an open emotion?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address town meeting. Kate Federoff, Town Council. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Carol McCoy, Finance Director, Town Accountant. David Walsh, Wastewater Superintendent. Jason Silva, Community Development Director. Tina Betty, Human Resource Manager. Matt Pennella, Conservation Agent. Jill Prue, Superintendent of Schools. Sarah Hickey, Director of Business Services, Silver Lake Regional School District. Joyce Kristol Fowski, Health Agent. Brian Holmes, Police Chief. Maureen Clark, Principal Assessor. Robert Cuoco, Facilities Director. Marie Rosman, IT Manager. Donald Cologne, Library Director. Adam Hatch, Deputy Fire Chief. Kristen Berger, Water Department Engineer from Resilient CE. Laura Casey Popec, Assistant to the Police Chief.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Who's presenting Article One?
Move the town transfer the sum of $2,903.60 from prior year special articles identified in the warrant. All right, and the description is just as simple as the articles will pay outstanding invoices from unexpended articles for purchases before July 1st, 2023.
Open for debate. Seeing none, I'll move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Two.
Article Two. Move the town authorizes the return of the Smart Growth Grant in the amount of $600,000 to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in to close the Smart Growth Stabilization Fund. The article will authorize the return of the Smart Growth Grant provided to the Town of Kingston as an incentive in 2007. These funds were provided as an incentive to approve Smart Growth zoning district in which district, in which the district projects were never realized.
Open for debate. Favorable votes, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. I'll move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. It's in your handout material. If everyone can take that out. To expedite this meeting to address those matters that require action but tend to generate little to no debate, I'm going to put forward a consent agenda. I will move the consent agenda containing multiple articles as a group in a single motion. I will read each article's number and the description. If a member of town meeting raises and states hold, that item will be removed so that it may be debated in the normal course. Therefore, I'll move the articles which have not been held in a single motion. So basically, there's about 14 articles that generally create no debate. I'm going to read each description of them. If you'd like to hold it, and then it will just be like it's printed in the warrant. If not, it'll be moved as one motion like we just did the last two. Does everyone understand that? Does anyone have a question? So again, I'm going to read the articles. If you want to hold, that means take it out of the consent agenda, just stand up and say hold. Article Three, Supplemental F-24 Town Department Budgets. Article Seven, F-25 Department Enterprise Budget and Retained Earnings Appropriations. Article Nine, F-25 Wastewater Department Enterprise Budget and Surplus Revenue Appropriations. Article Ten, F-25 Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund Budget. Article Thirteen, F-25 Transfer to Employment Liability Reserve Fund. Article Fourteen, Transfer to Other Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability Fund. Article Fifteen, Transfer to Stabilization Fund. Article Sixteen, Transfer to Capitalization Stabilization Fund. Article Seventeen, Transfer to Municipal Building Insurance Fund. Article Twenty Four, F-25 Wage and Personnel Bylaw Amendment and Compensation Schedule. Article Twenty Seven, Rescind Borrowing Authorization for Cold Storage Building. Article Twenty Eight, Wastewater Improvement Funds Appropriation. Article Twenty Nine, Adopt Changes to the Bylaws. Article Thirty, Renumber General Bylaws. Seeing no holds. Having no holds, let's move to vote. All in favor of moving Articles Three, Seven, Nine, Ten, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty Four, Twenty Seven, Twenty Eight, Twenty Nine, and Thirty as printed in the informational warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one opposed. Which should bring us to Article Four.
Move the town transfer $601,327.27 from unexpended town meeting articles, specifically $188,914.27 from Article Seven of the May 5th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, and $412,413 from Article Eight of the May 14th, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and transfer said funds to the wastewater undesignated fund balance for the purpose of supplementing the wastewater department's FY24 budget. Basically, it comes down to we're not receiving revenue on our fourth tank, therefore we have a shortfall.
Approach the microphone.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. Just to clarify, you said there's a shortfall on the fourth tank and you're not receiving revenue. Does that mean that it's not, it hasn't been sold off essentially for usage?
The town made it perfectly clear they did not want us to take on any new growth. That was the debate and discussion at the last town meeting on the leaching fields. So we are not getting revenue from the fourth tank.
So when the project was originally sold to the town, I believe it was sold as it wouldn't move forward unless the capacity had been sold. So it wasn't sold prior to going forward, correct?
Incorrect. I said there was a way-
Hold on, one at a time, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, Elaine.
At the time the project was proposed, we had customers. When the town position changed on new growth, we had, some of those customers went away. Town meeting, when we proposed the leaching field, was very concerned about growth in town. So the fourth tank is not receiving flow, therefore we have no revenue for it.
Okay, I understand that, that explanation. But the question still comes back to, it was presented that it was going to be sold prior to going forward. So you may have had customers, but using the term customers is a little bit misleading. Saying, hey, I want capacity is not the same as saying, I'm buying capacity. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Harlow, I'd have to go back and watch the meeting for the exact wording of everything.
Anyone else like to be heard? This was a, Article Four was favorable, Board of Selectmen five to zero, Finance Committee six with one abstaining from the vote. All in favor of Article Four as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with minimal opposition. Article, try to slow things down. Article Five, please.
Carl Pike, Shore Drive. Motion for Article Five, move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act under, undesignated funds, a sum of $92,000 to replace the failed irrigation wells at the Opochinski Field as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. This article basically funds the rehabilitation and/or replacement of the water wells at the Opochinski Fields.
Open to debate. Seeing none, I'll move the question. All those in favor of Article Five as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Article Six. So, go ahead, Carl. I'm going to, Mr. Pike's going to give his openings as to the budget, but my intention is to do two things. I'm going to move the Silver Lake Regional School District, I'm going to basically split the budget. So I want to get the school budget under control first. So we'll take care of Silver Lake first, and then we'll go to education. So Silver Lake is obviously the high school. Education is KES, KIS. And just so you have a footprint of where we're going. And there is motions to amend. Those budgets already been signed and filed, so go ahead, Mr. Pike.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Finance Committee has worked diligently over the past four months with the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administration, Town Departments, the school committees, and the administrations to develop the proposed FY22 operating, 25 operating budget that we now present to you. We sincerely thank Keith Hickey, our Town Administrator, and Carol McCoy, the Town Director of Finance, and many other town and school officials for their exemplary support and patience with us throughout the budget process. The development of an annual budget is always challenging as we attempt to balance the cost of providing quality town services, including education, police, fire, and public works, with the need to maintain affordability for all taxpayers. The Finance Committee also strives to work with both town and school officials to develop financial management and budget practices that are sustainable for the future years. I will now provide just a few summary statistics for the FY25 proposed operating budget prior to moving the budget itself. The total budget equals $57.7 million, representing an increase of 4.2 million or 7% over FY24. The education budget is a total of $31.3 million, representing an increase of 2.9 million or 10.3% over the current year. That is equal to 54.3% of your total FY25 budget. The town budgets equal $26.3 million, which represents an increase of 1.3 million or 5.0% over the current year. Includes police and fire of 9.1 million, an increase of .6 million. Employee benefits, 8.1 million, for an increase of 556K. And public works and facilities, 2.6 million, an increase of only 66K. It should be noted that this proposed FY25 operating budget includes only $176,000 for town debt service because there are no significant remaining town bond issues outstanding. And of course, this excludes the water, wastewater, and Silver Lake Department debt financing, which are accounted for elsewhere. When determining the sustainability of operating budgets, the Finance Committee always wants to keep in mind that there will be future necessary debt borrowings which will impact future operating budgets. What funds the FY25 operating budget expense of $57.7 million? Real and personal property taxes account for $44.3 million, or 77% of the financing of the town operating budget comes from real and property taxes. Net state aid provides another $6.6 million, which is 11%. And of course, this state aid number excludes the state aid to the Silver Lake Regional School District. Local receipts provide 6.6 million, and again, 11%. What makes up local receipts? The biggest single items are motor vehicle excise taxes at 2.5 million and ambulance fees at 1.2. What will this budget do to your annual real estate taxes? For a property valued at $500,000, your tax increase for next fiscal year will be approximately $500. For a property valued at $1 million, your tax increase will be approximately $1,000 next fiscal year. The last item on here is the excess levy capacity. Excess levy capacity, you've heard me talk about it in prior years. That's the level of allowable levy taxation, real estate, personal property taxation, that is not utilized for the funding of a current year budget. It represents the amount that could be taxed in the current budget year, but we've chosen not to tax it, and it remains available for future current year appropriations when and if necessary. The FY proposed budget excess levy capacity that we're presenting here today is $651,000. To give you an idea of what that is in relation to prior years, the average excess levy capacity over the past seven years has been $1.7 million. So this budget has eaten up or provides for a million dollars less of what I call reserve capacity. Those are my general comments on the operating budget. I will now make the motion to move it. Move the town appropriate the sum of $57,658,693 to be expended for the operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, for personnel services and for expenses as printed in the handout entitled Town of Kingston FY25 Summary Budget. And to meet such appropriation, that the sum of $56,808,976 be raised and appropriated, the sum of $426,346 be transferred from the Water Enterprise Revenue, the sum of $344,357 be transferred from Waste Water Enterprise Revenue, the sum of $57,014 be transferred from the Septic Betterment Fund Balance, the sum of $12,000 be transferred from the Inspection Services Revolving Fund, and the sum of $10,000 be transferred from the Municipal Building Insurance Fund. As I'm sure you all know by now, this is the article that is the town's operating budget for fiscal year 2025.
I believe some, so I'm going to, on my own, I'm going to split this, Article Six. So I'm going to just concentrate on the Silver Lake Regional School District assessment Some of them have a motion?
All.
Okay. File a motion. So there's a motion to amend the Silver Lake Regional School District as printed in the warrant, and sir, identify yourself.
James Sewell, 51 Indian Pond Road, Kingston.
Just do the first one first.
Yep. I move to reduce the FY25 proposed Silver Lake Regional School District assessment by $350,000 from $16,744,111 to $16,394,111. The reduction including, the reduction of this budget will be used to increase the unused tax levy. That reduction will impact the unused tax levy from $651,011 to $1,001,011.
Okay, we'll open it up. Would you like to make comments on that, or?
Well, yes, I would. Again, my understanding was I could just make my motion.
Yeah, just anything-
Now with a debate?
Yes, I'd give you first bite of the apple.
Yep, thank you very much. The, during the selectmen and the meeting with the school committee, one of the points that was brought up, and it was brought up by Dave Fuller especially from the Finance Committee, was how low the unused tax levy was going to be as a result of this budget. I served three years on the Finance Committee, especially during COVID. And what Carl said in regards to the levy is true. We always tried to target that unspent amount. And the reason that's important is because, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a fire truck, Chief Douglas can attest to this, that broke down on the way to a call. We were able to buy a used truck from one of the towns on the Cape. If that wasn't available and we didn't have the funds in the town, the unused tax levy would be one avenue of which we could turn around and fund that truck if needed. The other one that brought my mind was COVID. During COVID, we were required by the state, they came to us about, I think in March, and said that we had to reduce the budget by 15%. That was their recommendation. And we went to all the town departments at that time on the Finance Committee and tried to get adjustments, and it was not easy. The point I'm trying to make is that if there was something that needed to be spent, you need that levy in order to turn around and take fast action for it. And if that levy's not there, then, as David Fuller brought up in the meeting, next year, for instance, we'll be looking at probably a Prop II and a half override. And looking at next year, the wages that have been negotiated for the union contracts are anywhere from a 2% increase to a 3% increase depending on the contract. On a $50 million budget, you're roughly talking about $1,200,000, and you have $600,000 left over, plus whatever 2.5% will be for next year. The point I'm trying to make is it's extremely tight. My final point is regarding this Silver Lake, this is an organizational year with their problems with special ed and with kindergarten preliminary education. And I understand that. But I think what has to happen is all the parties have to come to the table. And the town, in both articles, will come to the table with $2 million instead of 2.9. I think the schools need to come to the table as well to help solve this problem, but I do think we need to leave some, a lot, a little more room, room that we've typically left in that tax levy capacity in order to turn around and, in case we have any unforeseen financial problems. So that's, that's the point of the motion.
Yes.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland's Lane. I'm also on the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. So, Mr. Sewell, when you talk about coming to the table, we've been coming to the table the entire time we've been serving and working on these budgets. And as you know, we've seen substantial increases in both special education, transportation, out-of-district costs that we do not have any control over. So when you're making reductions to, I believe it would be another 2% of the budget for Silver Lake, you're asking us to cut staff, you're asking us to cut necessary positions to retain the education that we've been giving our children. So with that, I just wanted to clarify that the school departments are the only departments in town that have made any cuts. And there was a motion on the table last month at the Board of Selectmen's meeting to cut $189,000 from the town budget. It was not passed, and, but, but that motion was made on the table because the town budget came in still at 4.5% when it was requested 3% across the board. It was also requested that town departments come in at level service, which is what the schools have presented to you today, both the budgets, and I'll speak to your second motion when we get to that, but the budgets that the schools have presented today are level service budgets. That means we are not adding anything to the budgets that the students did not have last year. And in addition to that, we've also made $855,000 cuts from the Silver Lake Regional School budget. That, those reductions were made in the March meeting. That accounted for the 2% decrease that was already made to the budget. In addition to that, there was $750,000 moved over from the E and D, which is the essentially- In addition to that, there was $750,000 moved over from the E and D, which is the essentially stabilization fund for the regional budget. There was $750,000 moved over to create those reductions in the budget. So the increases that you're seeing in the Silver Lake Regional Budget, that includes the restructuring that's required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Those programs have been moved from Kingston programs to Silver Lake programs, specifically special education for grades 7 through 12, up to age 22 for children that qualify, as well as all of the preschool programs have been moved to the Silver Lake budget. From doing that, we are no longer responsible on the Kingston School Committee level for 100% of special education costs. We are now responsible for only grades K through 6 at the elementary level, while the regional budget is responsible for 7 through 12, as well as preschool, special education. And because it's now part of the regional budget, it goes by assessment. So that means Kingston is paying our assessment, which is between 57 and 58% of those costs. But in addition to that, we're also paying for Halifax and Plimpton, 58% of their special education costs for grades 7 through 12 and the preschool. So our budget has gone up almost a half million dollars just for that change in formula, and that's less than the amount that you're seeing in the reduction proposed for this budget. And then there's the following motion that I'll speak to again. But just to clarify, I do not support this motion. You're asking for positions to be cut, and I would, I would urge the community not to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I'll give you the last word. Sir?
I, Jeannie.
You want to go first? Okay.
Jeannie, I appreciate that, and I do understand it. I, my concern is for the whole town. And, you know, the schools are important, and, and as important as any other department in the town, and I don't argue that at all. But there are other parts of the town that are important as well. And the, I understand, as I said, the, I don't understand the whole thing, to be quite frank with you, because I applaud your efforts and the school committee's efforts for the time you guys spend on it. But I do see the impact in terms of the total town budget. And, and that's really what I'm focusing on. The biggest problem, too, is that, you know, with taxes going up on an average of $500 per average $500,000 home, and $1,000 on million-dollar homes, you're asking quite a bit of the town to take a big bite in this budget, of which 55% of it is education. And what I'd like to see is that bite be a little less. And at the end of the day, we're still bringing $2 million for the education side in terms of increased spending. And I think it's important, and I support this motion, in order to turn around and keep the levy capacity where it is, where it needs to be. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Barbara Lanson, 99 Moncks Hill Road. My initial question was somewhat answered in that, what's this $350,000 reduction going to do to the district? And I do hear cuts in personnel and staffing for students.
Yes. Yeah, can you speak up, sir? Thank you. Can you start over?
Is it on? On, okay. So we gotta get close.
Maybe I'll have them raise it a little.
Okay, here we go. Barbara Lanson, 99 Moncks Hill Road.
Can you just start over? Thank you.
Yep. My initial question was answered in terms of the cuts seem to be coming from personnel and staffing. I understand the levy consideration, the excess levy, that we need to have that, that emergency fund, so to speak, to deal with issues. My, my concern is that that's a maybe. And yes, it's something we really need to have, but this is a for-sure detrimental effect on the, the future for our children and our students in there, and trying to maintain what we have. And, and anyone who's in education, I am an educator in a different district, knows how tight things are right now, and how difficult it is to meet the needs of our students with what we have. And to reduce that even further, I, I fear is gonna have longer lasting consequences than a, maybe a fire truck will break down next year, or whatever concerns are there. Those are real. Those are real. But I think that the choice to take this from the future of our students, our schools, I think is, is not the right choice. I don't know what the right choice is. I think there's, there should be more done, maybe with the state, to get more aid in. We had a lot of cuts in the past year. Maybe that's something we could focus on, or however else we can kind of get those, those needs in here. But I don't wanna put our, our education system on the chopping block to, to solve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Boudreaux, 11 Gilfeather Lane. I just want to comment on everything that was just said. I want to clarify, I have three kids. I live in Kingston. My daughter went to the integrated preschool last year. And most important is I'm a special ed administrator at the middle school and high school. I think there were some comments around, like, what that actually looks like at staffing. I'm at the trenches. I'm, I'm in it. I take, I assign teachers aides, I assign teachers to classrooms. I think by asking the schools to cut additional staffing, that's gonna ultimately increase the out-of-district costs for special education. It's extremely important to have those staff in the classrooms, not only for the special education students, but it benefits all kids. So I just want to say, it might seem like a lot, but ultimately, without that staff, it will lead to higher out-of-district costs for our students. We're not gonna be able to provide the education, we're not gonna be able to provide the social, emotional support. Administrators like myself are gonna be even more pulled in different directions, more than we already are. I appreciate all the administration that's here to represent. It goes to show that we're all in this together. We just can't afford to make those additional cuts. Again, just clarifying, in the trenches, assigning staff, putting teachers in different places, people are being moved in a million different directions this year. Over the last couple of years, we've had maternity leaves, we haven't been able to fill positions. So we're already stretched to the max. With more cuts, it's gonna be even worse for our kids than that. The idea of getting to a certain level of MCAS, getting our students to get too proficient in multiple areas is just not gonna happen, and it's gonna cause more people to possibly not move to our towns. I ask that you don't make, I, I don't support the idea of cutting additional staff for those reasons. I just don't think we can, we can support it. We've already made enough cuts as it is, we're already not filling positions for next year, it's just gonna make things significantly worse for our students. And I think they should be the ones we're talking about, not the townspeople, not the adults, not the voters. We have to be thinking of the little ones in our community that are gonna be impacted the most. Having a class size of 25 little ones is just not realistic. Having a middle school, high school class of 25 kids with various needs is just not gonna, again, it's not supporting any of the students and any of the, the kids in our community.
Thank you. Can we, can we hold the applause, please? This isn't a popularity. Just speak up, and then we'll vote. You can applause what you vote. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Dorothy McFarlane. I live at 17 Wapping Road. I'm a senior in this town. I went to Silver Lake, I graduated from Silver Lake. My father was on the school board that built it. I've been an educator, one way or another, for my entire life. I understand that education is one of the most important things that we can do in any town. However, I am now a senior, I'm on a fixed income, $500 is, it's less than you would take from the cost of my house. I mean, I would have to pay more than $500. I cannot afford any more increase with what we already have. You have to be realistic and balance things. There are needs. Also, we have many seniors in this town, many on fixed incomes, other people with low incomes. There is, it's like you can't get blood out of a stone, okay? I'm all for Silver Lake. I'm sorry to have to stand up and say this, but I can't afford to pay you anymore.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. Just kind of piggybacking off that sentiment, I actually have neighbors live in the area, Rock and Oak area, they can't even attend the meeting. Again, they're elderly, they're unable to, to make it. You know, they've been here for 40-plus years, and their property taxes are just skyrocketing and skyrocketing and skyrocketing. And it gets into, is our goal to push, essentially push people out. That wasn't really my main point, but just bringing up what Mr. McFarlane was saying, I mostly had some questions. One was, there was a mention about making attempts at, I know maintaining level services, but other towns like Plymouth, I don't know what the, the Silver Lake transportation costs are, but Plymouth, for example, is starting to increase their cost of transportation. I don't even know if Kingston has entertained the notion of charging people for, for buses. Again, I know it's not ideal. The other question that I actually had, and I don't know if this applies to Silver Lake or if it applies to the KES side of things, but have there been discussions with the teachers to maybe see if they would, they would maintain their, their salaries where they are, for right now at least? The other question that I had was, just looking at other towns' budgets, because other, you know, I've been to town meetings plenty of times, people always compare to other towns, why does Kingston's special ed budget seem so large, disproportionately large, compared to other towns, in terms of the, the amount of students that we have? And then the last question I had was, and this is open to anybody, it's not directed towards, I'm just looking for answers. Have there recently been any audits of the Silver Lake, exterior audits of the Silver Lake and the KES? And that's just a curiosity question from, from that perspective.
Whoever wants to stand up and answer, if someone has the information provided. If you don't know, you don't know. I don't know.
Actually, there was an audit done for Silver Lake recently. It was completed two years late. And that's because one of the things they found in the audit is that we're at least four staff members short in our district office. For those that don't know, we're part of a regional district. Kingston is one of three communities, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton, which makes up Silver Lake, and then it's all part of Union 31 Superintendency. Our superintendent up here, she is the superintendent of all four school committees. But regarding the audit, our central office, we have one superintendent, we have one assistant superintendent, we have the principal for each schools, as well as a principal for the new Silver Lake preschool, because that's now officially part of Silver Lake. And we are finding through the audit that was just presented at, I believe it was the February meeting, that we're at least four staff members in central office too short. So that's just central office. We are also two years behind on the, the, getting the budget in, or not the budget, but the audit in, because we, we don't have the staffing to do it. So if anyone wants to see the efficiency, and the lack of efficiency of running a four-town district, just come to all of the meetings that Dr. Prue has to attend every month, which includes at least one school committee. Well, we're on a six-week rotation right now, so she attends the Kingston, the Halifax, the Plimpton, Silver Lake school committee meetings, as well as all of the collective bargaining with all of our teachers for each of those unions, as well as our support staff for all of those unions. It, it can go on and on and on, and that's the efficiency that we're working with already in the district. So we are understaffed. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to respond to the questions? Oh, I know you asked the question, I'm seeing, you asked a question not knowing the answer.
Well, I'd like to respond to the responses, as I said.
Amy Court, right, 117 Grove Street. I'm also a member of the Silver Lake School Committee. I have a response to the transportation. Other towns are not regional. The state law for regional districts is different for transportation than it is for single-town districts. In other towns, I work in another district, students above a certain age who live within a certain distance of the building are, the district is allowed to charge those students a fee in order to get transportation. We do not have that luxury in Silver Lake. We are required by state law to provide transportation to every single student in our district, even if they live within walking distance, as I do. So that's, that's not negotiable. That's just one thing. I have other things to say, but I'll wait my turn.
Eric? Do you have an answer? No? Okay. Anyone, any other questions?
I have comments. I'm not, not a question.
No, I just, I just, you asked some questions, does anyone have an answer to that? Not comments. So, no other information?
Was one of the questions?
Yeah, you gotta get to a microphone.
Oh, you just said, you have questions.
No, I'm looking, he asked a number of questions, Mr. Harlow. Do you have an answer to one of his questions?
I guess I have a comment.
No, I don't need comments, I just need answers. Mr. Harlow, I guess, thank you.
So, with regard to the audit, so I was asking more from a financial perspective of the audit. So are you saying that the audit returned, saying that we actually aren't spending enough money? Is that my understanding? If we're understaffed, are you saying that we're, we're spending below what we should be spending?
That audit.
Gotta be at a microphone. Jean, why don't you come up front? And if anyone from the school would like to join Jean up here.
The audit that was presented to us was not so much a financial audit. Eric, I believe, could speak and talk a little bit about the numbers that Kingston and Silver Lake spend per student. So I'll let him answer that, but we're actually below averages on both. But thank you.
Go ahead.
I had other comments, but I'll address this. Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I'm on the selectmen now, but I spent 16 years on the elementary school committee, and I think like six or seven on the regional school committee. I was gonna talk about the per pupil spending. It, it's, I downloaded a document from the DESI website that shows per pupil spending at every school district in, in the state. So the state average, and the latest they have is 2023, so I know this budget is gonna be higher. But the state average back in 2023 was $21,000 per pupil, and that includes out-of-district spending, which can really increase it. The average could be like 18, and it adds another three because of out-of-district spending. When we moved to Kingston back in 20, 2000, we did so because Kingston was investing in education, it was higher than the state average. Kingston in 2023 was 12,000 per student. That's K through 6. Without a district, it went up to 15,000. Silver Lake, which is 7 through 12, was 22,365. Again, this is in 2023. So if you average it out, it's somewhere around 18.5 per student, where the state was, state average was 21,000. I don't think Kingston is a below-average town in Massachusetts, but we are below average, or at least we were in 2023, in terms of the per pupil spending. But we've made lots of cuts over the years. I mean, we've cut, I mean, we've cut, I remember, I was on the elementary school committee, it was probably 12 or 13 years ago, where we cut music band art, we cut teachers, so we cut the non-essential. I mean, a lot of people would argue whether that's essential or not. But we made a lot of cuts. And in Silver Lake, we've cut programs, we've cut Latin out, we've cut quite a bit. So I mean, I, hopefully that answers your question about the per pupil spending. I don't know what it is for 2024, because they don't, they don't have that data yet.
All right, thank you. And just my very last point, I know I asked questions, I'm sorry for the delay, but if you look at just, just the school, overall school spending, because I know that stuff got shifted from, because we were told that we had to shift from the, the KES to Silver Lake. So I was looking at the overall budget of the combined Silver Lake and the KES, and since 2022, if this budget goes through, we'll be up 21 and 1/2% in spending in, in three years, essentially. And one of the things that I'll just say in general as a comment is, I know everybody's talking about gas prices going up, food costs going up, all these things that they can't control.
30 seconds, please.
This is one item, because we have town meeting, that we can control. This is one budgetary item of many that we can control, so that we don't have to make those decisions on, do we purchase a certain food or not, for our kids, right? So we talk about the education side, but it's a, you have to think in things in totality. It doesn't just focus on just one aspect. As Mr. Sewell, I don't know where you went, but right there, had said, you have to keep the total picture in mind. And that's where the difficult thing comes in. And I know a lot of people have personal interests, because they have students in the school system, and they're voting on the budget. People who I have been adamant against.
Can you wrap it up, please? You gotta wrap it up.
Yep. Adamant against spending of government funds. All of a sudden, they're proposing an increase of 10 and 1/2% this year. And ironically, it's because, in my opinion, it impacts our kids, and I understand it. But you can't just vote singularly on your own, you know, mentality.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Nope, Jean, no, nope. Yes, ma'am. She's been waiting. Yes.
Hi, Magda Mikulka of 104 Wolf Pond Road. It's a very, very hard situation here that we're facing today, because we have to take from one to give to the other, and I understand it. But I wanted to talk about two issues here. Well, I am a mom, I have two children in Silver Lake. One of them is on the spectrum, my daughter is in KIS. As of now, we don't have teachers for the next year. We have one teacher that doesn't know if she will be able to stay, depends on the budget. We need more teachers. I volunteer. I volunteered once for the classroom, and I witnessed, most of the kids need 101 in the classroom. They don't have one quarter of, you know, of what they really need. And I think that, you know, we're talking a lot about inclusion and having kids integrated into the society. There are a lot of kids with needs, and if we do not integrate those kids into the society, we're not going to have a productive, you know, members of the community. And education is a huge, huge piece of integration. So as of now, the classroom that my daughter is in is in the limbo. We don't know how many teachers we're going to have, we don't have anyone right now for the next year, so it's very, you know, it's a very upsetting situation for a parent to witness something like this. I also wanted to add, I'm in real estate. First thing that people are looking at, if you have a family with children, first thing you're looking at when you're considering a town to move, you look at the school ratings. If the ratings are going to drop, and they have dropped since we moved here five years ago, people are not going to choose Kingston. That means less money for the whole town, less taxes. I mean, you know, people start, probably will start moving out to different districts if our district will not be able to provide for the children. And again, I understand the situation is very hard, because there is not enough to go around, but at the same time, the school rating is huge for the whole town, not just for the people that have children in the school district. So, thank you.
I'm looking for just new information now. I understand the cost to some people, kids in the school, everything that's been said. So anyone who's at the microphone, you can make your points. Anyone else now approaching the microphone, new information only. Yes, sir.
Mark Quiderbony, 15 Old Orchard Lane, seated member on your Silver Lake School Committee. Couple points. Mrs. Coleman presented very well the mechanics of the Silver Lake budget, but left out a particular piece. An amendment to the Silver Lake budget at this point is in fact a denial, and if we vote it down, the other two towns have the authority to vote it up, and we're gonna get the number that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee has already put together. So, and I caution you that an amendment, even though a recommendation, is certainly still just a denial. We could, at this point, also discuss that we have cut in both school budgets, the positions, several positions that retired were not replaced. So you're already seeing an increase in the size of classrooms, a small increase, but I want folks to know that we've already cut this budget as far as we can, and proposing back to it, at this point, if the town can't afford it, you're gonna affect the elementary school kids, which is really not fair, because that budget, you have 100% authority to amend. But the Silver Lake budget is fixed where it is, and I think we have done significant due diligence to get it where we're at. We have taken half of our stabilization funds for this year, and that's a dangerous situation, because we don't have that stabilization that Carl Pike talked about within our regional schools to handle any contingency that we have during the year. So I think we're all in, and I appreciate your support for the Silver Lake budget. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. Ed Bilecki, 437 Elm Street. I just wanted to comment first, I want to thank all the regional school committee members for all their work. Second, as a senior, and my wife and I being in our 70s and 80s, we find it tough to pay our taxes, too, but this is so important to us as a town, that we need to support our kids, and so I hope that we turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll get your turn, don't worry.
Hi, sorry, Sheila, were you gonna go next?
No, you go right ahead.
Amy Court, right, again, 117 Grove Street. So I have a couple of additional factual points to make. Number one, we didn't get circuit breaker this year. In most years, we get circuit breaker money from the state-
What is circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker is money to cover the difference between what we're paying for, I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, special education mandated, basically unfunded mandates, that then they reimburse us for to fund them. Because of the reorganization, we didn't get that this year. We will get it next year, so some of the big increases are not gonna be, you're not gonna see the big increases every year. Another issue, and I believe this was brought up, so I apologize if I'm repeating myself or repeating somebody else. The cuts that were just mentioned, there were two full-time professional positions in addition to aids through attrition that have been cut. Basically, people retired, never were replaced, those were not added back into the budget. The 1.2 FTE positions that were added in were to fulfill state mandates. So we're talking about a already, basically, net full-time position has been cut in addition to all of the other cuts being made. There was reference made to squeezing blood from a stone, but that applies to the schools, too. We are cutting everything we can to try to give the kids the best services we can. Believe this may be my last point. The other issue, we've mentioned, actually, I've got two more points. Outside placements, and again, someone correct me on the actual numbers if I'm wrong, but I believe the state approved up to 14% increase, being able to be charged by some of these state-approved outside placement institutions. We're not allowed to increase our taxes by 14%, and we haven't increased the budget by 14%. So again, we're already coming in below what we're being hit with and doing the best we can. And finally, in addition to special education outside placements, another mom mentioned, we may be losing students to families moving out of town, but families can also stay in town and send their kids to a charter school. And when the kids go to charter schools, we lose that money. We're required by state law to give that money to the charter school, and if we lose, say, three or four kids to a charter school, that's a teacher, that's a program, and you can't cut a teacher when four kids leave, but yet that's what we'd have to do financially. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Sheila?
So I just wanted to say-
Identify yourself.
Oh, Sheila Vaughn, 7 Frank Street, Kingston, Mass. And I'm a mom of three. I have a six-year-old, 13-year-old, and a 16-year-old. I was on the school committee for about 10 years, I'm elementary committee. I just wanted to make note that the elementary committee actually cut almost 11%. So there are negative, negative 11% coming into this meeting as well. So because the integrated preschool went over there to Silver Lake, which we've known about for quite a few years now, this is coming down the pike about two years when I was on the committee. We have also brought in special education programs from Marie Grable when she was here, the DLC and SLC, which keep our kids in district, which costs us less money if we were to send them out of district. But our excess levy, as you've stated, with ambulances, we can afford that still. It's not that we are not flush a little bit, in that we don't have any money. So if people feel as though we won't be able to get something, we can. So don't, a little bit of gaslighting regarding some of these things. We all have issues, I have elderly parents as well. There are things that we have to work with, and I understand that, I've lived in this town for 20 years. It's just really important to understand that, as a parent of a child who's on IEP or 504, we used to separate out the special education and the regular day budget to state what was mandated and what is actually by regular day. We're not allowed to do that anymore. It is all, everything that is increasing is mandated by the state, that we have to do these things. So I just want to let you know that it's not that you haven't done it, and you have to believe in these committees, that they are the ones that go through this day after day for no money, and they do it every single week, and go through these budgets line by line, and do it for our children, just like any other committee like capital planning or CPC. So we all sat down very, when you say sit down and talk, we've all sat down and talked with FinCom, with the selectmen, with the school committees, and go to those committee meetings and listen. So when you go on town floor and try to do these types of things, you should be going to the actual meetings and discussing with people before going on the town floor and doing something like this.
Thank you. Just new information, I, if, yep, we'll get to them. It's my meeting, you do the board of selectmen. Ma'am, do you have something new you'd like to present?
I do.
Okay, yes.
Pam Curtin, 29 Winter Street. I also work in the assessor's office at the town hall, so as far as the seniors and their being able to afford to live here, I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of the senior exemption that we offer in town on taxes. So if somebody is over 70 and they're a low-income senior, they may qualify for that. This year, the income limit for a senior, single, was about $29,000. A married couple, I believe, was around $49,000. So if somebody has less than that amount, and the amounts are on the website exactly, if somebody makes less than that in income and has less than about $46,000 in assets, they may qualify for those. So we have two exemptions that we offer the seniors. If they qualify for the income and asset limits, they get $1,000 off their taxes. If they only qualify for the asset limits, they get 400. The amounts go up a little bit every year. And also, I believe there's a motion on the warrant to increase the amount for the senior exemption. So for people that are saying this is gonna be a struggle for the seniors, I just wanted to make sure all the seniors in town know that information, and they can come in the assessor's office and apply if they think they qualify.
Thank you. Something new?
Yes, Caitlin Sullivan, 16 Cedar Street. I want to add, make sure everyone knows, as I'm aware, one of the positions there in the budget as it already stands, that they've cut due to attrition to retirement, is a reading specialist, a KIS. Is that correct? I want to make sure everyone's aware, that's a, it's not a non-essential position, it's a reading specialist. So I wanted to make that point, to make sure everyone's aware of one of the positions in the budget as it already stands, that it's cut. So that's where we're at.
Don't worry, I'm gonna get you. No? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, what she, the lady over there was talking about was the senior work office, called. I do do that, and I have that money taken off my real estate taxes. It's still very, very tough for me.
I understand, ma'am.
And many others.
Thank you. We're not going back to that. Last words from the front there. We're moving to the question.
I would say also, I heard from someone on the school committee that if a senior can't afford to live in Kingston, then they should sell their house and move away. Well, I'm not gonna do that, and that's disgusting.
Thank you. Right up front, last two, we're gonna move this question.
Again, Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I just wanted to add, you know, when you're cutting a budget, and I know this is a big ask, in all my years in Kingston, I've never seen such a big increase. There's some, it's been a perfect storm of increases. But we've made cuts, we've cut programs before. As I said earlier, you know, at Silver Lake, they've cut Latin. Latin used to be in the middle school and the high school, and you think Latin's a dead language, who cares? It's not a dead language, it's very, very, very much alive in science. There's a kid in Kingston who did Latin in middle school and high school, went on to college to do biochemical engineering. Him and his team of five others, by the age of 26, have created a cure for sickle cell anemia, and they're doing the same thing for diabetes. So type 1 diabetes. So it, you know, when we cut programs, there's consequences to that. Not just what a kid is gonna be able to do when they go to college or when they're working, but also what's gonna happen to our taxes. And this is, it's a tough one. I've talked about this every year, the charter schools. So if we cut programs and a family decides, I'm taking my kid out and I'm sending him to wherever, BC High, we lose the state funding for that child, but we don't lose the local taxes. But if they go to a charter school, we lose both. So we're spending our local taxes, that money goes with that kid to that charter school. And again, as Amy had said, we don't save the same amount of money when that kid leaves. And I believe it was just a few years ago, we were spending close to $1 million. So if those charter schools never happened, we'd have $1 million more in our budget right now. So when you cut these things, parents have to decide what they're gonna do. And that's, it's not just people moving or not moving here, it's also what they're gonna do with their kids. Are they gonna leave them in the schools, or are they gonna take them out and send them to charter, which is gonna take away from our schools?
Jean, last word.
Thank you. It's more of a point of order, just because I know that this is a difficult part of the article that we're at right now. This is a motion to amend the article, so just as a point of clarity, the first vote that the moderator is going to take is going to be to reduce the budget.
I got this under control.
Yes.
I've done it twice.
Please, please stay afterwards and vote to support the budget, because if not, it's, these are separate motions.
I'm trying to get there.
Thank you.
Can I?
30 seconds, we gotta, we gotta take a vote here.
No, I want to make one last point, and I don't think it's fair that you're cutting me off. I just want to give people the details in the trenches. We have multiple well-established programs at both the middle and the high school. We have a program for students that are over 18 that are entitled to programs until they're 22 years old. We have programs at the middle and high school for students with social-emotional needs that's very specialized. By reducing that, we may lose one student, which equals one staff member. I just, I don't know if people really understand even what the process is to send a student out of district, and I'm just putting this out there, I don't think there's familiarity with it, but like Sheila said, it is a mandate. We have to provide our students with a free and appropriate education, that is the job of the schools, all staff in the schools. So again, within the programs, you send one student out of district, which is a year-long, lots of data, lots of collection. Again, I'm giving you the information from in the trenches, but also, it's the job of everyone, and I would just like, moving forward, for all people to call them students, not special education students, but students. This isn't about just a specific subset of students. Again, that's a label, and that's not fair to them.
Can we just have your name, just so?
Michelle Boudreaux.
Thank you.
Gilfeather Lane.
Okay, I'm gonna move this question, okay? This is just a motion to amend. As the motion, so this isn't voting on the budget, this is a motion to reduce, F25 proposed Silver Lake Regional School District Budget Assessment by $350,000 from $16,744,111 to $16,394,111. So this is if you want to reduce the budget. All those in favor of reducing the budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to reducing the budget, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. So now, while we have you, I'm gonna move that we approve the Silver Lake Regional School District Assessment as printed in Article 6, that'd be the third line item, the $16,744,111 as printed in the article. Favorable Board of Selectmen Finance Committee was a 5-2. All those in favor of that-
Please move on a second.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I do need help. All those in favor of passing that as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries minimal opposition. Now, we're gonna do the education one next, that's the fourth one. It's kind of gonna be the same arguments, but I'll open it up to Jim for his motion again. All right, that motion's been withdrawn. So now we have the education budget for Kingston, the $14 million as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Second. Would anyone bring in all those arguments we just heard? Back to the floor, we've all heard them all. Anything additional on that? Come on up.
Thank you, Sean. Check this off my bucket list. Happy to be here. My name is Timothy Lewis, 28 Clifton Drive. I am fortunately the chair of the Kingston School Committee. I'm here in support of our budget. In full disclosure, I initially voted to consider more cuts this year in collaboration with our financial committee and our Board of Selectmen, and the abundance of work that was done by both Kingston School Committee, District Administration, and the Silver Lake School Committee. I now support the budget in its entirety. Our committee spent an abundance of time working on this to get it balanced in response to, in collaboration with the towns, as well as our school. So I ask you to humbly support the budget as it is written now, so that our schools continue, can continue to improve as we go. Thank you.
Open for debate?
When did that, when the school committee vote was now? If it was a final-
You can ask, I don't have to answer. No, what was the vote?
It was granted. We did not reconsider the budget. It was passed and went to FinCom, there was no need to reconsider.
All right, seeing none. Move to approve the education, that'd be number four in the fiscal 25 operating budget as printed in the warrant, 14568740. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries minimal opposition. All right, so we have the rest of the budget now, but there is an amendment to the budget if that individual's here. if that individual's here. Craig Dalton? Keith, does that come out of general government? Oh, no, 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 we're just getting started, don't leave. No, no. Guys, we still got to meet, I know, can we just, go ahead.
What about the kids in Article 34?
Go ahead, sir.
It's kind of out of order, isn't it?
No, we're on budget.
Yeah, our budget's way down.
Where are you, it's in the general government, isn't it?
Historical Commission.
It's within, yeah.
All right. Hello. Go ahead, sir, state your name.
Craig Dalton, 11 Elm Street, Kingston, Chair of the Historical Commission. These are small potatoes compared to what we're just talking about, but move that the town amend the fiscal year '25 budget for the Historical Commission by adding $750 to our budget.
Can you tell us why you need $750, sir?
I will tell you that.
Well, not you, but your department.
Yes. The Historical Commission's fiscal year '24 budget was $1,000. With the upcoming 300th anniversary, we expect to actually have increased costs, as anybody can imagine. We're going to be heavily involved with that and already are. Thus, the commission had considered increasing our fiscal year '25 budget due to these expected increase in activity, but decided we could wait until next year, assuming that our current $1,000 budget would be adequate. We were surprised to find out last week that our fiscal year '25 budget was cut 75% to $250, with no notice to us or discussion about it with us. It's a minuscule amount of the town's total budget, but for us, it's a big amount. So we're asking that the Historical Commission's budget for fiscal year '25 be level funded, returning it to a $1,000 budget.
Okay. Anyone want to be heard on adding $750 to a $57 million budget? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, good job, sir.
Thank you. You can ask, but no.
All those opposed?
No.
Mr. Harlow, thank you.
So can somebody quickly? Yes, sir.
With the quorum?
You want to?
With any effect on the quorum, people have left?
You want to count?
Nope. If you'd like to take in your opinions, you can mark them.
I don't have a problem with it, but you called it, so now we have to count it.
No, we had clickers, we didn't have to.
But we're still on budget, so you can't call a quorum, because I've already called the budget. But after that, we can count. So nobody leaves, because I got to count. Can someone add the 750 to the budget? What does that change to that total budget? Anyone have a calculator?
Without the schools?
Yes.
Without the schools, it's 26,346,592.
Minus the schools, add in the 750, it'd be 26,346,592? Say that one more time, Keith? So now we're going to open up the rest of the budget here. So that'd be general budget, public safety, public works, human services, culture recreation, debt services, employment benefits, and insurance. The total budget now, including the schools, would be $57,659,443, as allowed with the amendments. Would anyone like to be heard on any other budget items? Seeing no debate, I'll move to accept the budget as printed with the amendments in Article 6. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Budget carries of minimal opposition. Quorum. I, I, can everyone raise their red, orange cards real fast? I don't believe I have a quorum issue, but if someone wants to call me on it, feel free to stand up and call a quorum. Okay, moving on. Eight, we're not moving eight, so it's not being moved. I believe that's resolved, so that hasn't become an issue. Nine, we've done. Ten, we've done. Number 11, and seeing how we're at number 11, I'd like to wish a very special happy birthday to my 11-year-old William today. I'll be home by noon.
We'll see.
Article 11, who has that? Oh, hello.
Article 11, revolving funds. Move the town authorize the approval of limits, let me make sure this is actually listed online. Hold on, I wrote up my write-up before I got this handout, so let me make sure that legal counsel has approved the language here. Move the town authorize the approval of limits on expenditures from each revolving fund established pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as printed in the warrant. Are there any questions about this article?
Just give a brief description.
Okay. As required by law, this article reestablishes the maximum amount of money that can be spent from each of the town's individual revolving funds that have previously been established. The only difference with this article this year is a request to increase the Recreation Revolving Fund annual expenditure limit from $500,000 to $700,000. If this increased amount is not approved, the Recreation Department will have to limit the number of facilities available and reduce the number of programs offered to our community. So just keeping it in mind, increasing an expenditure limit is not adding cost to the town, it allows them to take more money in and then expend funds from that money. So registrations for summer camp can then be spent on T-shirts for summer camp, if that makes sense.
Open for debate. Seeing no one approaching the microphones, favorable vote, Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, 5-1, majority vote, all those in favor as Article 7 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with no opposition. Hello? It's the best I can do. Is there, is there anyone from the Facilities Department that could maybe adjust the thermostat? Are you comfortable going on? Or should we, do we need to take a break to heat up the room? All right, if we can get some heat going. Article, Article 12? Hello? Before, before we get going, Article 12, introduce yourself, and I'll give you the minute or two you asked to make a presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joe Casner, I'm the.
Closer to the mic.
I'm the chairman of the Health Board. Yes, I am here for Article 12, but. Toilet to the mic. Okay, good morning. My name is Joe Casner, I'm the chairman of the Health Board.
You got to get closer.
I can't eat the thing.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, no, take a nibble.
Okay, good morning. My name is Joe Casner, and I'm the Health Board Chairman in town. I'm here today for two reasons, one of which, of course, is to present Article 12. Before that, I need a minute of your time to recognize six years of service that we've been given by Janet Wade. She's been a fantastic member of our Board of Health, having served two full terms, and she's done a lot more than just serve as a Health Board member. She has, in addition to her service that she's given us as a Health Board member, Janet has also, as a nurse, she's provided services up at the homeless shelter during the COVID epidemic. She brought in a team of nurses, helped to organize the clinics, she had the nurses giving out the shots up there, and she also established a TV program called Healthy Kingston, of which she's very proud, and she brings in different people to discuss different matters pertaining to public health in the community. She's liaised on to the library, and she's done an awful lot of work up there, developing little programs for kids. So I'm here today to ask her to maybe recognize her service with us as a Health Board member, and to thank her for the service that she's given us during this time. And I'd like you to stand right up there, Janet, and. We have a certificate of appreciation for you as well. And again, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, I'm going to miss you on the board tremendously, I thank you. And thank you all. Okay, so the other honor of business that I'm here for is Article 12. I have a motion. Move that the town amend Article 4, Chapter 4, Article 20, Section 4-20-5 of the general bylaws to establish a health revolving fund and approval of the limits of expenditures of $10,000 during any fiscal year from the revolving fund established pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as presented in the warrant. Thank you very much. Okay, what we're looking to do here is that Board of Health is now offering different courses, food handling courses, and in order to offer these courses from the ABF funds, we got an initial amount of money to buy the books and things that are necessary for the students who sign up for the course, for the, for the courses. What this fund would be used for would be to replenish that, those fees that the students pay to attend the courses, for the books and the materials. And it would isolate those funds to be used for that purpose, for purposes of education through the Board of Health. We're not asking for any money, we're just asking, did that money be set aside in this type of a fund for that purpose? Thank you.
Open for debate? Seeing none, I'll move the question, favorable Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, 4-2, majority vote, all those.
Excuse me?
You're getting a vote?
No, I know that. Can you get a minute? Janet's put her hand up twice.
Oh.
Go ahead, right, there's a microphone right there.
Okay, hello, everyone, I'm Janet Wade, and as you now know, I'm a member of the Board of Health. I would really encourage all of you to support this. We tried very hard the last several years, and I have a fellow nurse here, Heidi Whipper, with me, who's been on the board as well. And we are really emphasizing health promotion and wellness programs in the community and feel that they are more than valid. And as Joe had mentioned, the Serve Safe program was recently done by the health agent of the town. It's a $150 program. She did it at $80 at cost for people who own food-related businesses in the community, be they in the hospitality industry, or they're in restaurants, and this is to improve their quality of services and give them the certifications that they need to maintain their licenses. And she would like to perpetuate those programs and do a lot of additional programming in the future. We have, 28% of our population is elders. There are a number of programs that we could be doing for them, anything from caring for the caregiver to falls, preventing falls, parenting classes. We've done some work with the library, starting a Healthy Kingston Kids program there, and having interactive materials for them there. We've also put books in place there, health-related books. Those were all volunteer efforts, and that was through donated monies. The bottom line is, we're not asking for any additional funding. We are just asking to have a revolving fund, as Joe had mentioned, to perpetuate these programs and the extent of these programs to the benefit of the health and wellness of the community.
Thank you.
I think you can all see now why I'm going to miss her so much.
I think you had the votes before she got up, but I think she's going to put it over the top now. I'm with you. All those in, Article 12, we're going to move it, all those in favor, majority vote, passing Article 12 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No one dare after you spoke.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Motion carries no opposition. We're on to 18.
Article 18, move the town vote to close the previously established opioid settlement stabilization fund to comply with Chapter 77, Section 197 of the Acts of 2023, and further to authorize the town to place all statewide opioid settlement receipts previously received, including $11,542.74 from the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund, and $75,789.93 from free cash, in addition to those funds received in the future into a special revenue fund in accordance with said Chapter 77, Section 197 of the Acts of 2023, and Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, and any other enabling authority. Said funds to be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law pursuant to the terms and conditions of applicable opioid litigation documents and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations, further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds. So pursuant to recently established guidance from the Department of Revenue, a special revenue fund may be created to deposit opioid settlement funds into and for use without further appropriation, so long as the use of such funds is consistent with state guideline, any state guidelines or regulations. This article will close the recently established opioid settlement stabilization fund, move the money currently held in that account into a special revenue fund, and move funds received in fiscal year '24 to the special revenue fund, and revoke the dedication of revenue authorized at the FY '24 Fall Special Town Meeting.
Open? Any hands? Seeing nothing, I'll move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant, this is a two-thirds vote, favorable Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries no opposition. 19.
Heath Enberg, 214 Indian Pond Road. Move the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $1,479,112 for the capital expenditures, items 1 through 8, as printed in the warrant. Okay, you have the list of projects before you, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You got to go to the mic.
Tim Lewis, 28 Clifton Drive, also the Kingston School Committee Chair. In consultation with the superintendent and the Director of Facilities Management of the Silver Lake and Kingston Schools, I would just like to amend the wording of Project Number 8 in the School Department, of $100,000 to replace the exterior doors at the intermediate school. According to the superintendent and facilities director, it must read as follows. Exterior door repair and replacement building envelope work based on the recent facility assessment.
I can't remember that.
He got to write it.
All right.
I'm just going to allow that amendment, it doesn't change the dollar amount, it's just wording, so that's just a requirement. Not so much a problem, that?
No.
Need a second. I'm going to move just to call that a friendly amendment to Article 8, it doesn't change the, the value, it's just the, the. It doesn't change the value, it's just the wording. So there's a second. Anyone opposed to my friendly amendment? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. But he hasn't signed it yet. So we're open to debate on Article 19, Products One Through Eight. All right, so I'm just going to, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Products One Through Eight as printed in Article 19, as amended for Number Eight, the wording. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with no opposition. The second part of the article is for the lease payments, and do you want to move that quickly?
Yep. Move the town appropriate and transfer the capital stabiliz, from the capital stabilization fund, the sum of $747,515 for the capital expenditures for lease purchases, items nine through 14, as printed in the warrant, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $747,515 be transferred from the capital project stabilization fund, said expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named.
So these are basically just paying contracts that we approved at prior town meetings, correct?
Leases.
Leases?
Yep.
Leases of contract. Anyone like to be heard on those? All those in favor of, we need a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of these lease payments as printed in Article 19, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries no opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. 20.
Move the town appropriate the sum of $80,618.93 from free cash and a sum of $158,108.07 from unexpended articles, a total of totaling $238,727 to be expended for the purchase or projects one through 10 of the various town departments as printed in the warrant, and to trade or dispose of any used equipment of those departments in the best interest of the town. Can I get a second?
Yes. Go ahead. Open, open for debate. We've got a second. Anyone like to be heard?
They're laughing at me. When we voted on this warrant article, it passed three-two for the Selectmen, and Tyler abandoned me up here by myself.
I don't clarify which...
I know, I'm going to right now. So I just want to make an amendment. I want to remove Project Number Three. Can I go ahead and explain why?
Hold on, let's make the, so the motion is to exclude the $9,985 for electronic voting keypads and supporting materials as printed in the warrant?
Correct.
Second. Okay, tell the why.
Okay, so town meeting is our legislative process. When we first looked at this, this fundamentally, fundamentally changes our town meeting and the tradition that we've had for hundreds of years. At the federal, state, and the local level, the legislative process is open. By going to the electronic voting keypads, I feel like, and I'm not the only one, but I feel like it's, it's just voting. It's like going to the poll. It's anonymous. But when we hold up our card or we're saying yes or no, we're owning our vote. It's part of the debate, it's part of the process. So by going to electronic voting keypads, I just feel like that, we're losing our democratic process. I mean, yes, we're moving into more technology, but, but we're then, you're not owning your vote anymore. And it's not just a vote. You know, we have elections where we actually go and vote, and your anonymity is protected. It's, it's private. But the legislative process should never be that way. You should have to own what it is that you're fighting for. It's messy, there's downsides to it, but democracy is worth it, and that's why we need to do it. And we just, we need to own our votes.
So just so everyone's clear, I am the moderator, at least for this year, and next. I don't intend to use these. So the only way I'm going to use these devices is if someone brings a warrant amendment to the bylaws saying I have to use these devices at town meeting. It's old school, call me boring, call me not with the times, stand up, own your vote. I'm not going to use them. So the only way you're going to force me to use them is to amend the bylaws. So you're spending $10,000 to put this in Mr. Gallagher's closet. If you want to use these at town meeting, you're going to have to amend the bylaws and say, I have to use these. I don't want someone in the bathroom, someone else holding someone's keypad, or I just, you stand up, you vote, we come together as a community. So to use these, you might want to amend the town bylaws before you spend $10,000. We're talking about saving money here, but I'm not voting, feel free to do what you want. Thank you.
As the person that's, that's moving the motion, I did, I was not aware of the moderator's understanding on this, that he was, would not use them. So if he's not going to use them, I would rather not spend the money this year, but, so I don't know if I want to change my vote now, because if he's not going to use them for two years, I don't want to waste any taxpayer money if he's not going to use them. And when we get a new moderator, we can bring this back up to the table if, if that's what people want to do.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland Lane. I'm on the school committee, and I believe that as a member of the school committee, it's my responsibility to understand our budget so that we can speak to it and so that we can ask you all to support our budget as well. And if we don't understand our budget, we have no business asking for you to vote for it. So I'm going to say that when we, when we are making these motions, you should know how your elected officials are voting on these especially monetary articles that we're asking you to fund. So I would completely agree with Eric that if we're going to put our support behind something, especially with monetary value, that we're owning, we're owning it, and that we are completely supporting it in both our actions and our vote. So thank you for bringing this amendment.
Tyler Bouchard, 217 Partingways Road, and one of the Selectmen. I'll make this quick, because we can, we can make it quick. Tough for me to make things quick. Everybody that knows me. But the one statement I'll say is, the one of the reasons why I like the old-school cards and kind of keeping it in that, that, that system, is the accountability of the board, the people sitting up here, Finance Committee and Selectmen. And I've been on this side, and I've been on this side. And I think that when we vote for something, the body should be able to see who's raising their hands up here. Not out of, not out of bullying or anger, but to be able to see accountability and to be able to say that, to, to understand who is voting for what, clear, clear as day, from the people that sit up here. And that's, that's one of my main points. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sarah Alter, 41 Landry Road. I just learned about this last night when I was watching the video of the town meeting articles, which was great, but I didn't really, I had never heard of this idea before, and I don't like it. But I, how many other people had heard of this before today?
I didn't hear about it until it was in the, in the warrant, so...
So I just, I would appreciate an explanation of what this is. They're like little cards or something, and you would bring them in to town meeting, and you would vote on your card. I mean, like an electronic card, right? Like a credit card.
So on Project Number Three, it says, this request would fund handheld voting clickers that would allow the voter to attending college meeting to push a button when voting at town meeting, and have the votes cast be electronically counted rather than having voice votes or hand counts for each warrant article. So there is a picture of it with a green and a red and a, and a yellow.
Right, but we didn't get this until today, correct?
This has been on the town website for quite a long time.
Right, it was very hard to get, it was very hard to get to the town meeting warrant, and I did several times. But anyway, thank you for the explanation.
Kim Embert, 214 Indian Pond Road. I just wanted to add, the reason this is on this warrant today is because residents have asked for it. They've asked for it for a number of years, and there are people, many residents who are also employees, who have felt bullied and unable to vote openly in town meeting, and have either left town meeting or changed their vote because of the pressures that they felt in the room. So I'm happy to pull my card up. I think everyone in this room knows I voted no by myself plenty of times, but not everybody feels comfortable doing that. So this is the reason it's on the warrant for you all to vote on. Ultimately, it's up to town meeting body if this is the way they want to go, and if the moderator chooses not to use them or doesn't support them, maybe it makes sense to change the bylaws first, but that's the reason it's before you today. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Paul Gallagher, and I'm going to speak to it because I guess they're going to be held in my closet.[1208.03][1208.03](laughter) I've been your town clerk for 10 years, and clickers, I think, have been around for longer than that, and I've heard about them for those 10 years, that the town wants them, okay? And maybe not everybody does. But when you look at what happened today, we opened up with 120 people, maybe it got up to 150. As soon as the school budget was over, how many people left? They don't care to vote on the other stuff. But I can tell you, there are a number of people out there in town that don't come to this forum and don't want to vote because they're afraid of the repercussions of people seeing their vote. Kim is correct. People have complained for a number of years that they feel threatened, they feel abused when someone's watching. And I can tell you right now, people are watching your vote, and you might not see ramifications, but some will. So I didn't bring this forward, I, to be honest with you, it's been talked about so long that I think it just came on the warrant because it's been talked about for so long. One of the things I can say to it is, you know, we talked about accountability, and some of the Selectmen want to keep that democratic process open, and they want you to be able to see how your boards are voting. Well, on every article prior to the town meeting, they take their vote, and they vote three to two, or three to one to one, or four to zero. So that would not go away. You would still know how your representatives are voting on it. Two, and I won't keep any more time to it, but two, I just want to say that in the past 10 years, I've done everything I could possibly do to take us out of the 18th century and bring us to the 21st century. And the surrounding communities all have it, not all of them, but most have it. It's totally accepted and used in a number of towns, over 250 towns in the state are using the same system. So, you know, it does, it does give you some anonymity in your vote, it makes you, maybe make you feel more comfortable. It's been spoken about for so long that it ended up on the, on the town meeting warrant because it had been spoken to for so long. So I'll leave you at that, I won't talk anymore about it. I'm not, I'm not supporting or against it. You know, I know that I'm going to actually end up running it. I don't have a problem with that, if that's what the town wants. And I do think that it brings us some efficiency, maybe move the, the town meeting along quicker, quicker. So take it for that.
Thank you. This, ma'am, last word?
Yep. Lorraine Bergio, 42 Wintorpe Street. I'm not opposed or for it, but I do have a question relative to the, the item. There's nothing in there that talks about maintenance and repair and functionality. So are we assuming that the 9,000-something is a one-shot deal, and we're never going to be replacing another clicker? Do we need to repair it? Is this something that's going to keep going on and on and on?
Okay, I should have explained that to you. I thank you for the question.
Okay.
Just to give you a description, it's no bigger than a credit card. It's a little bit thicker, it has a yes button, a no button, and a pass button. It controls the count of those still holding on to a clicker. So it can tell you that, okay, we have over 100 people here today, we can get started. It tells you halfway through when you want it, you just ask it, it tells you that we still have a quorum. So there's efficiency to it, and it is just a small card, yes, no, or pass. It's, it, they require you purchase a minimum of 300. Now, we only have typically 120, 150 people show up, but with something controversial, you're going to need more. Because of the surrounding communities that, that use the same system, we'd be able to borrow from them. If we couldn't borrow, you can actually lease additional for a controversial article. The, you know, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any comments about repair and, and stuff like that, because any piece of equipment you have is going to have repairs that might need to be needed, and they're not going to cover them forever for $10,000. That's just the way it is. But they do provide a lot of support and a lot of backup, free of charge, when you use in the system.
Okay.
They will be here for at least the first meeting, if not the next two, to explain how it goes, how it works, and, and take care of helping us learn how to use it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the other thing I will address too, is that I understand where the moderator's coming from. He says that he has the opportunity to decide whether or not he's going to use them or not. Well, there's no sense in, in, in bringing a bylaw to use a piece of equipment that we aren't going to fund. So the bylaw to use these would come after the purchase, similarly, almost simultaneously, but we can change the bylaw to use these. If the town votes to use these, then he doesn't really have the option to decide whether or not he's going to use them or not. If it's a part of the bylaw that we use them, then we use them. If there's once, if someone wants to do a recount by hand, someone could call it. I'd prefer to have a recount by hand. You'll all still get a card, you'll all still get a little clicker, and if someone wants to get up and say, I'd like to have a hand count, you can, you can require it to be done.
So that's my point. If you vote and someone wants to stand up and hold everyone accountable to their vote, they can still do that, correct?
Absolutely. I think that's a positive to the system, is that you do have that opportunity.
Let, let's move this. This is $10,000, and we're going to get on with this meeting. So the amendment is to remove Number Three from Article 20. All those, that $9,985, all those in favor of removing that from the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You did that on...
We only had clickers.
You did that on purpose.[1582.41][1582.41](laughter) One more time, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We're counting, man.
We're going to count, but I, the ayes have it by a bunch. All those, the counters... Can the, can the, pull out your cards, please? All right, all those in favor of removing Number Three from the warrant, hold up your 12?
15.
All those opposed to removing it from the...
10.
What'd you get?
10.
10?
10.
No, it's removed.
Yeah, it passes.
Yeah, so Article, at a vote of 62 to 57, I think it took us 90 seconds to do that, it failed. I mean, it passes, so Article Three is removed, excuse us, start over, Sean. Article 20, Number Three is removed from the warrant. Now we'll move, anyone else want to debate anything else in Article 20, numbers one through 10, excluding three? Whose article is this? Whose article is this?
Sheila.
Sheila, are you going to answer questions?
Oh, I'm going to...
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I thought we were voting.
You're going to tell them?
Oh, no, that was, we were removing Article Three. Does anybody have any other questions about the Project Three?
It's already been done.
Yeah, so are there any other questions regarding any other projects?
Yes, sir. State your name, please, and your address.
Hi, James Davenport, 2 Oak Street. I was just wondering if somebody could speak about Article Number Eight, where the Finance Committee voted 0-6-0.
So now Article Eight is, the Project Eight is evaluate intermediate school air conditioning needs. This project would fund a consultant to determine the future air conditioning needs of the intermediate school. So you are welcome to talk to the students and the teachers about the air conditioning.
Carl Pike, Finance Committee Chair. The Finance Committee voted against this with the feeling that... The Finance Committee voted against this with the feeling that now we were just not excited about having to spend thirty thousand dollars for a consultant when we have a facilities department in town, we have a facilities manager at Silver Lake. We felt that, you know, they could pass judgment on what needed to be done.
Can I ask a quick question of Carl? Our, our facilities manager is here? Is there any way, oh, or if, if we could know if that would be possible by the superintendent, if our facilities would be able to do that? Or so if somebody from the school committee could answer that question? Do you mind if I ask that?
I don't even know what your question is.
He, because he said that-
Why they need it.
Because he said that they-
Yeah, she's going up. Sorry, I was doing math. I struggle.
So our facilities director is certainly willing-
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Superintendent Jill Prue, Silver Lake, Union Thirty-One. And our, our facilities director is certainly very willing to work with town facilities in terms of examining the scope of the project. However, our facilities director is not an HVAC expert. So, I think that's why the original request was made, to make sure that we had a true understanding of, of what the project would entail and what potential future costs would be.
Okay. Anyone else? So, Mr. Hickey, correct me if my math is off. We're gonna be moving seventy thousand six hundred and thirty-three-
You haven't taken a poll, have you?
No. Yep. Seventy thousand six thirty-three ninety-three? From Free Cash.
Hundred and fifty-eight, one oh eight, oh seven. So it went down to seventy thousand six thirty-three ninety-three?
Yep, and the other number? And one fifty-eight oh seven from Free Cash?
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, so it'll be two twenty-eight, seven two three, two, two seven, seven, seven four two, okay? So it'll be two twenty-eight, seven four two. We're taking out the projects three. FYI.
So, motion to pass as explained by myself and Ms. Vaughn in Article twenty. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries, minimal opposition. Twenty-one? Oh, that's an easy one.
Move. The town accepts the recommendations of the trustees of the Elizabeth B. Sampson Memorial Fund to appropriate a sum of fifty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars from the income of said fund to be expended for the purposes of the trustee, uh, sorry, the purposes the trustees recommend. This article appropriates the interest earned from the Elizabeth Sampson Fund for various projects by the trust, recommended by the trustees. Town meeting can only approve or disapprove these recommendations, and the trustees cannot amend or substitute. Just briefly, I was privileged to sit on this committee of three with Sean and Ms. Sandberg to hear from town departments. This money is basically a fund that was started a long, long time ago, even before Ms. McFarland went to high school. And it's a fund to supplement budgets in the town where the department head feels like it wouldn't be a prudent investment by the town to raise inappropriate funds by tax. So, it's a pretty nice little savings account to have, and this year we were able to spend fifty-one thousand dollars out of it, or close to fifty-two. It was one project that you'll hear about later that we weren't able to fund. So, that's my spiel.
So it doesn't come out of taxpayer dollars?
It does not.
Okay, that's a good thing. Anyone wanna be heard? How can we move this to a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the F-25 Sampson Fund appropriations as printed in Article twenty-one? Favorable Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, no opposition. Twenty-two.
Carl Pike, most, move the town approve, approve the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the FY-25 Community Preservation Budget and to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, a sum of nineteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for FY-25. And further, to reserve for future appropriation, a sum of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eight dollars from the Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues for open space, historic resources, and community housing purposes. This article appropriates and reserves from the Community Preservation Fund ten percent of each year's revenues for open space, historic preservation, and community housing, with the remaining revenue deposited into a fourth category, the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund. This article provides for the administrative expenses of the committee, including, but not limited, to the Executive Secretary's stipend.
Would anyone like to be heard? Good. So I'll move it. Article twenty-two, as printed, favorable votes, Board of Selectmen, four zero one, Finance Committee, six zero, Community Preservation Committee, six zero. All those in favor of Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion two. Move the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing Funds, a sum of fifty thousand dollars, as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide further funding for affordable housing in Kingston. If funded, this project would provide further funding in the Kingston, to the Kingston Affordable Housing Trust General Fund to initiate projects in Kingston to expand the inventory of affordable housing in town. Several new housing projects are being proposed in Kingston. The Affordable Housing Trust plans to partner with developers to fund additional units within each project.
That's a favorable vote, five zero zero, that's a typo in the, or a revote. Anyone like to be heard in debate on that one? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, no opposition.
Motion three. Move the town appropriate seventy-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from available Community Preservation Act Funds, fifty thousand twenty-eight dollars from the historic preservation funds, and twenty-eight, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars from the undesignated fund balance for the repair work being done at the Major John Bradford Home, as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
That's a five-o vote on the Finance Committee. Anyone wanna be heard? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion four. Move the town appropriate fifty thousand from available Community Preservation Act Funds, forty-one thousand eight sixty-three from open space funds, eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven from undesignated fund balance, as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide further funding for affordable housing in Kingston.
Favorable by everybody? Yes?
None of these motions match up with the Warren articles? None of them? None of the numbers, none of the motion numbers, what he's reading off?
Hold on, slow down. So, we're on motion four for Article twenty-two?
Yep. It's different. I don't know if it's just my book, but picked it up up front. I hear mumbles all over.
I think you're right.
I am.
I've been reading from my work copy, and so it's probably been some last changes made here since I did it.
Do you have the other, the one that was handed out today, Carl?
I just picked it up.
Okay, can we forget everything you just heard on motion four? Let's start that one over again. The other three were fine.
Motion four, move the town- This is the same thing.
Don't jump.
Whoa. So if you go and just say, "I move that the town vote to appropriate fifty thousand dollars and to meet this" for the per, so just go, "I move."
Yep.
So- "I move the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars and to meet the appropriation forty-one thousand eight sixty-three from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds, and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars from undesignated fund balances for the purchase of the Roger Korea Properties Map Lot Numbers Forty-four dash one, forty-three dash twelve, forty-three dash thirteen, forty-three dash fourteen, forty-three dash fifteen, abutting Whopping Road." "If funded, this project would extend protection and restoration of the Jones River through acquisition of Roger Korea's land along the mainstream of the Jones River by the Kingston Conservation Commission and its nonprofit partners. The land directly abuts the Hathaway Preserve, town conservation land, and currently provides the only access easement to that land, a narrow ten-foot-wide easement that leads to a retreat parking area. This purchase would allow the gating of that path, Circuit Trail BC One, to be on trails rather than streets and add existing dirt, grass, bog roads as recreational paths, those that remain after wetland restoration. The BCT enters Kingston at Silver Lake Sanctuary and currently proceeds through protected land along the river as far as the Hathaway Preserve. The terminus of the BCT is in Kingston at Bay Fan Conservation Area. Other goals of this project are adding to local passive recreation opportunities, expanding on maintaining wildlife corridors, improving stewardship of con, town conservation land, and preserving local agriculture."
So, Carl, if I could, if I could, you said the Kingston at Bay Fan Conservation Area, is that Bay Fan, or is it Bay Farm?
Bay Farm, I would hope.
Bay Farm. That's what I'm thinking too. Is that what it is, Bay Farm?
Yeah.
Alright, so we're on motion three, everyone on the same page, hopefully? Well, it might be different pages, but at least we know the motion. Do, we have a second? Alright, good. Anyone wanna be heard? Up, nope. We still have a second. Yes, sir.
So the way this reads is we're buying this property for fifty thousand dollars?
I had the same question. Is there anybody here from-
That's a great question, Carl.
From, from Conservation Department, or who, who made this? Please.
Can you hear me? Alright, so, no, we are not purchasing for fifty thousand dollars, this is fifty thousand dollars towards the purchase. We expect, if we're able to purchase the property, that it will be nearly entirely grant-funded.
Nearly entirely grant-funded. Folks, I'm Ken Mowali, one eleven Whopping Road, I'm also your collector and your treasurer. The town of Kingston is not in the land-owning business. And this is a lot of land. There's one, two, three houses on that land, or two houses and some outbuildings. There's a lot of property that the town really doesn't need. I get it, it, it abuts some beautiful open space, which we already own. But, I look back, and my predecessor, Carl Pike, can attest to the amount of open space that we own that is just given to us by way of people not paying their taxes. And we tried to do something about it, but we weren't able to do anything about it because we were stopped mid-process. We have plenty of open space and plenty of land here that I know for a fact, this property, there was an offer made on this property that was denied, which is well under what the town is gonna end up getting or paying for this through grants and whatever. So, I, I disapprove of this in, in a big way. This is not a good move for the town of Kingston.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought there was somebody over there. Tom Bouchard, Sixth Quail Run. I think this is a beautiful piece of property, I wouldn't mind the town owning it. But I wanna know who, if the town is gonna put money into it, who are the nonprofits? Who's in control of this? Are we in control of this land? What are the houses gonna be used for? What are the outbuildings gonna be used for? What are the bogs gonna be used for? I would like to know all those things before anybody votes on this 'cause I, I don't understand who will be in charge of this property. I don't like buying properties or putting money into properties that the King, town of Kingston is not in control of. Thank you.
Can you address that?
Sure. Very much up in the air right now. We've been working with several nonprofit partners, Jones River Watershed Association, Wildlands Trust, Mass Audubon, and Native Land Conservancy. As of right now, it would either be town purchase as conservation land, with any outbuildings likely leased out to a nonprofit. It's really up in the air as far as whether certain portions, portions of the property will be available. There are two residential houses on the greater property, but we really, at this point, don't know what's gonna be available for sale. Strictly positioning for being able to answer or write a first refusal, if that comes up, just based on the ecological sensitivity of the property. The Jones River runs right at the edge of the property between Hathaway Preserve and Mr. Carrera's bogs. You have probably, I don't know, fifty acres or so of bogs on the property, I think, off the top of my head, that we're looking to restore for the purpose of, you know, creating a better buffer for the Jones River and better stormwater management. As of right now, it's either gonna be the town purchasing it, or more than likely, if any nonprofit is going to own it, it would be JRWA. So we're basically just positioning right now to try to react and be able to preserve the property. Pretty, I don't wanna say limited, construction potential there, but, I mean, I don't know if we'd be looking at Bog Solar or something along those lines. So, we're just looking to protect the property for the purpose of protecting the Jones River.
Go ahead.
I, I, I have been deeply involved with many of the properties that we own. And very supportive of conservation. I'm a conservationist. I love having property in town. But I don't like the unknowns. When we bought the, the, the property behind the high school, the three hundred and fifty acres, we knew in detail what was gonna happen. When we bought the Silver Lake Sanctuary, we knew what it was for, we understood who was in charge of it. Now we're gonna put money into something, we don't know who's in charge, we don't know who our partners are, we don't know what their intentions are, we don't know if we can do any things that Matt is, is talking about. Now listen, I love Matt, he's doing a great job. We've had a little difference of opinion on this. I just think that we wait until we know what's going, we wait until we know what the price is, and what we're gonna have to pay. And before we start putting money out, and, I, that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Yes, you wanna address as a resident?
Yeah, two things. One point and one, one question.
Can't hear you.
Paul, Mike, I'm sorry? Oh, alright, so, one point and one question. The first point is, is for those of you in the audience that don't know the property that we're talking about, and those at home watching, these are the beautiful cranberry bogs on the right-hand side on one oh six, headed towards Plimpton. There's bogs on either side, this property will be the one on the right-hand side. Roger Korea has done an incredible job over the years maintaining it and keeping that growing. He's leaving, so that's the property, just as a point of clarification.
He's leaving, so that's the property, just as a point of clarification. Two, my question on this fifty thousand dollars, is this fifty thousand dollars required that we have so that we can apply for the grants to then bring forward whether or not we want to purchase it?
Grants have, I said it doesn't hurt, most grants have a match requirement, so this will definitely help towards that match requirement. We've already applied for two grants to purchase the property. I believe both of the grants that we've applied for are in roughly the two million dollar range. We expect to hear shortly on those, and we have one more grant that we plan to apply for. I understand, like Mr. Bouchard said, it's very tentative. We don't have an exact plan, we don't have a signed agreement with the property owner, but it's just one way to try to position to be able to purchase the property if we are, if we have an opportunity. It is an important property. The Jones River obviously is an important resource. We've, a lot of people have spent a lot of time over the last decades trying to protect the Jones River corridor, and this furthers that.
If I could just follow up with another question, the fifty thousand dollars, if we don't receive the grants or we don't purchase the money, would the fifty thousand dollars come back to the town?
I believe the way it's written, if we do not purchase the property, then-
It would come back.
-can't spend that money.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Pine Dubois, Jones River Watershed Association Executive Director. First of all, this is not the first amount of money. Last year, the town provided thirty-five thousand to the Jones River Watershed Association to do a appraisal that would meet what is called Yellow Book standards, which means that if you use public money for the purchase of a property, it needs to, the appraisal needs to be standard, so the appraiser needs a license, the standards have to be met. That appraisal has been completed. The appraisal came out at less than the owner is asking for. It came out at one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. He had done an appraisal, that appraisal had come out at two million two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so not all that far apart. The site assessment was stopped because the owner, Roger Correa, wanted us to make an offer on the property in order to allow somebody to be on the property to determine if there were any hazards there, hazardous materials, diesel fuel spills, chemicals from all the agriculture. Matt said there were forty, fifty acres of cranberries, and there's forty-eight acres of filled and altered wetlands, twenty-three of that is cranberry bogs. The problem, the reason why we are so dedicated to trying to acquire this property, and Matt's right, there have been two grants submitted so far, and they need matched money. So if the town is at all interested in it, then the town can come up with a little bit of money to match those grant applications and that effort. The whole of Jones River, from Silver Lake, the head water, the glacial lake eighty feet deep, to Kingston Bay is category three D on the Clean Waters Act list. It is three D for nitrogen. The Sewer Commission last year, or two years ago, did a study that said seventy-five percent of that is coming from your septic system, and twenty-five percent of that is coming from chemical additions to people's lawns. It's nitrogen. The town is liable for repairing that when DEP gets around to doing the report that says, how are you going to fix it, town? The other problem that's there is that Fountainhead Brook, which is a tributary that starts up at Tall Timbers and comes all the way through next to Crossman Pond, goes under the road and goes down to the river, Roger just moved that over to the other side, made a canal out of it, a ditch out of it, if you will. That's also three oh three D listed, category five, four nitrogen, so is Crossman Pond. So in our mind, this would be a cheap way for the town to help restore the Jones River by taking his two pumps out of the river, that when I was on conservation, he never had the permission to do, take them out of the river, clean up, restore the wetlands, open it to the town to appreciate, and in the watershed associations and other interests, we would try to make a stewardship center to begin to take care of all of the town's open space properties.
Thirty seconds.
So Roger, so let me just finish one more piece about why we can't walk away from this, is what Matt said earlier, that all of those acreages, except for the former Costa House that is right on the road, which Roger bought in two thousand and seventeen and has one point eight acres associated with it, right in the middle of the property. It's all under Chapter sixty-one A, which means the town, if he sells it to somebody to take it out of farming, would have the right of first refusal on. If you're not ready to act, you're not going to be able to act. So what this, this application, this fifty thousand dollars is doing is getting the town ready to act. We've applied for funding, should all of that come through, you would be in a good place to act. And that's really what you're trying to do is protect the town's environment, restore the town's environment, deal with the fact that as we develop things, we tend to ruin them, so that's why we've been taking out the dams. And the good point is that the Jones River is improving, but we got a long way to go still, and this is going to help us get there, and I would very much encourage you to spend the fifty thousand dollars, it's already in the bank.
Thank you. Right behind you. Yes, ma'am.
Dorothy McFarlane, thirteen Whopping Road, ancient senior of Kingston. I've, it's very difficult to speak after Pine because she pretty much said everything I would have said, but being a long-term resident of Kingston, I've watched as open space turned into housing and more and more housing and more and more buildings and et cetera, roads and whatnot, and I, Mr. Pike and I have already disagreed on how much conservation you can have. I'm on the Conservation Commission, I'm also on the CPC. You can never have enough Conservation Commission, uh, come on, conservation land. The land that we have that's open generally doesn't get spilled on. It breathes for us, it gathers water, then when it rains, it doesn't run down into the street and go out, you know, directly to the ocean or wherever it eventually goes, depending on your system, but having this land will give us opportunities that we don't have. We can keep some of the cranberry bog as an educational bog, maybe schools or local schools can use it or other groups. I think it's a project that maybe is not fully planned yet, but it will be, and it's an opportunity that we just can't throw away.
Thank you. Just new information now, something new to add to this.
I think my one question was going to be, this is going to be for just the flexibility to get this property if need be, I think that's the case. My second question would be then, does this then require, if there is a purchase plan in place, to come back to town meeting? Would that have to happen, or if only you need more money to apply to that?
Yeah, I was going to say I'd have to defer to Kate. I believe we would have to come back to town meeting regardless of if it was grant-funded?
If it were grant-funded and the town, is your question, the town taking title to the property? If the town is taking title to the property, it would have to come back to the town meeting.
Okay.
If the town's expending more funds, it would have to come back to town meeting. So those things.
So if it's not town title and it's not more than the money that's been appropriated so far, it would not have to come back to town meeting?
Right, so if it's funded through other sources and you're just using what you're funding for tonight and you're not taking title, it wouldn't have to come back.
Okay, I think I've been hearing that, I think I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
I would like to have it come back to town meeting regardless, but obviously if it's only fifty thousand dollars that we're putting into this and someone else's title, I don't have a problem with that, I don't think, but I would like it to be revisited in some way, and I'll plan on attending Conservation Commission meetings to give my voice if that's the case. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen.
I have a new question, just would like an answer from somebody. I would like to know if there's been a full 21E done on this, if anybody doesn't know what that is. It's a study for contamination, and that's something that we should do before we buy any other properties, but the town already has enough problems in that regard.
Can you answer that question?
So as Pine was saying, the 21E was funded last year from CPC, as was the appraisal, and Roger would not allow the 21E to continue unless a offer was accepted. He claims to have performed his own 21E, but we've not seen any of that information, and anytime we purchase a property, that's really important because if there is contamination, I mean, we don't want to be liable for it, we want that to be taken care of before we purchase the property. I would say any sale would be contingent on that. There is no sale to this point, there is no agreement with Mr. Correa at this point.
Yes, sir.
Jim Franklin, fifty-three Winthrop Street. I think the body is pretty educated when it comes to the benefit of having the conservation land, the open space, right? Really what we're talking about here is we're talking about appropriating some money from the open space portion of the CPC and a little bit from undesignated funds. By establishing a match, putting some funds into this potential for down-the-road purchase of the Correa bogs, we're leaving ourselves open to that, the possibility that that's something that we can do. We can talk about it if we have to appropriate more money down the line, we can do that, we can bait it, we can do a two-thirds majority if we have to raise money for it, but right now, it's an opportunity. If we say no to the opportunity now, it makes it a lot harder to put this together on the grant side with the partners who are really behind trying to do this with us, right? So you have the opportunity right now to vote yes to appropriate some money, it's not necessarily going to be spent, it'll get spent if we move forward on the purchase, a lot of it's probably going to sit there if it falls apart. As far as the environmental study, all that has to be done if we're taking it as part of a sixty-one A acquisition, there's rules to it, all that process doesn't get circumvented by what we're talking about here today. High level of view, vote for it, appropriate it, we can't say that we don't want to protect conservation lands, open space, and then come back and say, oh, well, I hate what went in there. So this is your one opportunity to say yes, say yes.
Thank you. Anything new?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Jean Landis-Nahman, eighty-four Wolf Pond Road. I'm a member of the Agricultural Commission here in Kingston. We've discussed this property within our meeting as well as having met with Ms. Dubois regarding this property. We are most concerned about losing agricultural property within the town, it is sixty-one A, and we are very involved in trying to incorporate continuing agricultural activities on this property. So we have a, I think the town should have a vested interest in making sure that we continue with agricultural properties in the town, and I'm also in favor of protecting our water source. And thank you, Mr. Franklin, for pointing out that this is money already in the CPC, it's not an additional requirement.
We have all that.
All right, thank you very much.
Trying to get everyone to be heard. One behind you.
Can I briefly?
I'll get your last word. We've got two more people.
She just said what I was going to say.
Anything else? All right, last word, then we'll take a vote.
Yeah, just on what Jean was talking about, agriculture, just personally, is really important to me, and that's something that we have worked on trying to incorporate an agricultural component there. I think, again, it's tentative, it depends on what we end up getting. I think initially the thought was that the Costa House and property would really allow that a little bit better because of the uplands that are around it, but we do hope to include some sort of a, you know, agricultural component there, and that, to me, may have been where a nonprofit would come in in terms of being able to lease that instead of having it be something run by the town.
So we're going to move motion three for Article twenty-two favorable by Board of Selectmen Finance Committee and Community Preservation Committee. Wait, sorry, my bad, I jumped down one. Four, am I correct?
Yeah.
Sorry, my bad. Move Article four. I have different prints too. Article four and Article twenty-two favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee and Community Preservation. Again, motion four, Article twenty-two. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries minimal opposition. Motion for five of Article two.
Move the town appropriate from Available Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. If funded, this would allow the Conservation Department to contract the spraying of invasive plant species within the field at Calista Farm. Addressing the invasive species at Calista Farm is crucial for the restoration and overall maintenance of the property. If left untreated, these invasive species will not only propagate further on-site but will also spread to neighboring areas. In addition, invasive species pose a direct threat to native species and local biodiversity.
Anyone want to be heard? Everybody a second? I heard a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion.
The motion is read.
Yeah, I think we have different numbers, so we're going to go by the description. So does everyone, let's revote this. Does everyone have the description that Mr. Pike just read?
Yeah. Page thirty-three.
Page thirty-three.
Calista Farm grassland, it's listed no matter what, it's somewhere there.
It has one down, page thirty-two. Motion, motion four.
No, see, the motion comes after, that's the description and the motion's after that. So Community Preservation Fund four oh, see if the town will vote, go onto that on thirty-two, it goes on to thirty-three. Is everyone on the same page? Well, that's a dumb question. Does everyone understand what we're voting for? Anyone doesn't know, raise your hand. Okay. All those in favor, as presented by Mr. Pike? For motion. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion six, move the town appropriate from Available Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of one thousand dollars as presented in town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to build a tower for chimney swift birds at Opecinsky Fields.
No, so the motion, the description comes after the motion, so if you see the little picture on, under motion for five, you have the description, then you turn the page, there's the motion. It was probably, should have been done backwards, I'm not picking on whoever did it, you did a great job, but maybe next, but maybe next time we should have the motion before all that, so we'll fix that for the next town meeting, my apologies, but we're good. So we're on motion six, we had a second on that? Okay, any debate? Favorable votes, all in favor of motion six as printed in the Article twenty-two, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries minimal opposition. Number seven.
Motion seven, move the town appropriate from Available Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to refurbish the tennis courts at the Reed Property, including rehabilitating the surface area, repainting applicability activity court lines, install new netting and applicable activity equipment.
Anyone like to be heard? All those in favor of motion seven as printed in Article twenty-two, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries minimal opposition. Twenty-three.
Michael Cow at one forty-nine Grove Street, Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee. I move that the town set the salaries for elected officials effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, as printed in the warrant, and further the sum of six thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars be raised and appropriated for said salaries, and that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets. budgets.
And any description? Anyone want to be heard? Oh, hello.
Hi. Samantha Kuzo, Guil feather Lane. I'm not questioning an increase for these roles, but I am questioning the 3.8 percent. I know that police, fire, and teachers have to fight tooth and nail for their increases, and they are not getting a 3.8 increase. So I question, why do these roles warrant a 3.8 increase over those other roles in town? I can also tell you that I work for a global, very large company, and nobody was given a 3.8 percent this year and probably won't be next year either. So I'm more so questioning 3.8 percent, and maybe those roles should get the same as the police and fire and teachers are getting.
So our vote based, our vote for the collective treasurer and the town clerk's salaries is meant to align them with the Wage and Personnel bylaws that will come up in Article 24. We had a major effort put in to a Wage and Personnel study and an adjustment to the bylaws. Those salaries have historically remained quite low, and this is a very small attempt to get them somewhat back up to par.
Good morning. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Just want to let people know, and I can't speak specifically for the school department, but I, my assumption is that the school employees are getting more than the 3.8 percent raise, and the town employees that are unionized are as well. There's a three-and-a-half percent cost of living raise that's been, that's been included in the fiscal '25 collective bargaining agreements for all the unionized employees. All of the non-unionized employees are receiving the same 3.5 percent cost of living raise, and if there's some sort of a step raise that they're eligible for, they receive that as well. So the 3.8 percent that's being proposed for the elected officials is more, is, I'm sorry, is less than what most municipal employees are receiving now.
So if you go a couple pages forward in the warrant, I think to page forty-three at the top, you're going to see a Salary Schedule D with grades and steps outlined. And this, which will be familiar to anyone who's worked in municipal government, is a little bit misleading in the sense that typically there would be an increase to the grid as a whole as well as a step increase. And the 3.8 percent is meant to approximate what would happen if you multiply the increase to the grid as a whole by the step increase as well. So I think, as Mr. Hickey said, this is probably not even getting to the same level as the other folks who were mentioned. I can speak as a public school teacher in a neighboring district that because I will be able to move to a different step and have the collectively bargained increase, that our increase will be significantly, I believe, in excess of 3.8 percent, as I imagine is true for the other contracts that were mentioned.
Yes, ma'am.
Lorraine Bergio, 42 Winthrop Street. I'm also a member of the Wage and Personnel Board. I just wanted to correct a comment that was made that the Wage and Personnel Board approved an increase higher than 3.5 percent. We did not. We approved 3.5 percent. I didn't like the idea that the assumption was made that it was more. We worked very hard to keep in line with the schools and their contract increases. So we, the schools didn't get more than 3.5. There may be other things that accounted for it, like steps and so forth, but we approved 3.5 percent. Period. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland's Lane. I was actually just going to clarify that the largest increase we had given contractually was a 3 percent. There are other contracts that we approved. For instance, the Kingston Powers contract, we approved a $1, $1, $1, which does account for more than 3 percent, but that was the exception to the 3 percent. And that's where that figure went to. Thank you.
Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street. I just have a question. Were these the same stipends removed a few years ago to try to have the town save money, or are they different stipends?
My understanding is that these stipends have remained the same for the decade or so that I've been coming to town meeting.
Were these attempted to be removed? I thought there was something.
Kim Amber, 214 Indian Pond Road. We discussed it prior to a town meeting because we had questions about, there are some folks that are elected officials that qualify for health cover, health insurance coverage, but they are grandfathered in. So some of those roles have folks that are in positions and have been since that was eliminated, and I believe 2017, correct me if I'm wrong, but the stipends themselves, and this list haven't changed.
Okay. I just, all right.
But there was discussion, so that's probably what caused confusion.
Thank you.
Yes?
Do I have to give my name again?
Please.
Samantha Kuzo, Guil feather Lane. Unless I'm looking at the wrong contracts, but they are on the Town of Kingston website, the fire and police did not get above 3.8. They do have a step process, and I understand that because I'm married to a firefighter in another town. They have, I think it's three and a half, three and a half, and for 2025, our police and fire are getting 2 percent, and the teachers are getting 3 percent.
Thank you.
Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Just to correct, I'm sorry, it's three and a half, three and a half in fiscal '24, '25, fiscal '26, it moves down to 2 percent. The 3.8 percent that we're proposing for the elected officials does not include a step. So when you look at a police officer, for example, or a firefighter, they're getting three and a half percent plus a step in most cases.
Would the clerk of the treasurer like to address the audience? Okay.
So I myself, I get paid $14 a week to be a selectman. I've been doing this for four years. I really couldn't care less about my $14. It pretty much pays for my eyelashes once for a cup of coffee. I'm fine with not having my stipend. That's fine with me. But there are other people that are on other boards that do not work full-time like I do and might need that money as part of their, of what they have for their taxes. So I'm not about to go ask my other constituents without asking them to take away their stipends that they might actually use as part of their living. But I will say, for the collector and treasurer and the clerk, they'd go above and beyond every day of their lives. This is, I have actually asked for a stipend actually for Paul, and I want to look into that myself, because in years that do actually have elections, it takes, it takes a lot more now with, with the way that we mail in ballots and the way that we actually do everything in this town. So, and the way that we have worked well, because people can actually do things because of COVID. But that has exponentially put so much more pressure onto our collector's office, onto our clerk's office, and I can tell you that they don't get overtime. They are salaried. So anybody in their office that is part of the KTU or one of those do get overtime. They do not get overtime. They work when they work, just like I work and I'm salaried. So, but I might work 80 hours and that's the same salary I get. But the collector and treasurer are one, are pretty much one, one thing now, that we went from two to one. So you're doing much more work. But also, I want to say, these positions are very different than other positions in our town. And these two, I know it's not about people, but these two positions go above and beyond every single day and have exponentially changed over time and over the years. And I think that you have to look at it in a broader scale, that yes, other people have unions and there are things that happen. They also have a lot more security in what they do as well. So, and I think that it's important that you support these, these positions and these, in these rates, because exponentially they're, they have changed over time. They don't have an E7 that you can say, "Oh, that, that's changed in my position. I need to change it. I'm a state, I'm a state." But I have two units that I work with. So you just don't get to change somebody's job description. They just have to keep doing that. So if I had a job description and my, and my job description changed, I'd be getting a raise, and a big raise, because my job description changed. And their job description changes on a daily basis, and they don't get an extra, any extra for that. So I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping, of keeping this raise. They deserve it.
Mary?
Good, is it afternoon? I can't see that far. Good afternoon. Mary McKinnon, 61 Fox Den Road. I'd just like to point out that we have passed an operating budget for all town departments earlier today that is inclusive of probably more than 500 employees for the Town of Kingston. While we had some spirited debate on the overall operating budget, there was not one single question about the rate of pay for 500 other employees here in town. Every year at town meeting, we have this level of scrutiny over two individual positions. It's really unfortunate, and it's unfortunate because these are elected officials who come under this level of scrutiny. If they were appointed positions for the town, this conversation would never be happening. They would be included in the compensation schedules just like everybody else. We've heard it said several times now today that these positions do not afford themselves a step schedule like every other position here in this community. So these increases that are being proposed year over year are just trying to bring some equity to the two positions that we rely on as key members of our management structure. I strongly urge this body to support this increase, and let's move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of Article 23 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with very little opposition. Twenty-four's done. Twenty-five? I don't believe we're moving on twenty-five, correct? Are you not moving twenty-five?
Mary Beth Lawton, Director of Affairs. We're, Council on Aging would like to take a mo, make a motion.
No, you don't have to make a motion. Just, you're not moving it.
We're not moving it.
It doesn't exist.
Move on.
Thank you. Twenty-six?
All right. Move the town vote to increase the amount of the local property tax exemption for seniors and veterans provided for under the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, and Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N, from $1,000 to $1,250. So this article will increase the property tax work-off amount allowed for seniors and veterans to meet a portion of their local real, real property tax obligations through a volunteer work-off program. It just raises it $250.
Anyone else like to be heard? Okay. All those in favor of Article 26 as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
All right. So Article 31. Move the town amend Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 1522, penalties for Chapter 10 Kingston leash law impound as printed in the warrant. Can I get a second? Thank you. Do a little theater.
You had, you got your second.
Any questions?
We'll give you a third, too.
If anybody needs a description, this article will amend the existing leash law bylaw by increasing the fine for all offenses after the first offense.
Anyone like to be?
Leash your dog.
Anyone like to be heard? All those in favor of Article 31 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thirty-two.
Move the town vote to approve Article 32 as printed in the warrant. So this article allows the Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, and Town Administrator collectively to negotiate and execute solar or wind power agreements on behalf of the town. That's pretty much it.
You got a second?
Yes, I already described it.
Good. Anyone want to be heard?
Doesn't look like it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You're welcome. Thirty-three.
My name is Bob Kosker, 55 South Street. I was asked to move this on behalf of the SOAR Commission, who can't be here for a variety of reasons. Move the town vote to authorize the Board of SOAR Commissioners acquisition by gift, eminent domain, easement over country club way, for purpose of facilitating construction and maintenance of wastewater infrastructure and other utility construction within said ways, as well as on other municipally-owned property that can be assessed through such way, and further that the SOAR Commissioners shall be authorized to enter into any and all agreements necessary to effectuate the same, including the grant of restrictions that they're on. I think it's self-explanatory. If you need further explanation, I can take a shot at it, but.
Would anyone like to be heard in debate?
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland's Lane. Mr. Costa, can I just clarify, is this the same piece of property that we've spoken about at town meeting prior?
Yes.
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking is because I believe I was one of the dissenting votes at the last town meeting, and it was because I was hoping that you'd let us know that due diligence has been done to give this person's estate proper notice that the town plans to do this?
That was a different article.
No, this is not a water article. This is a SOAR article.
We didn't, the one with the easement for the wells.
That's totally different. Okay, thank you. Disregard.
Article 33. Anyone else want to be heard? Near two-thirds vote favorable by the sewer in the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor of Article 33 as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 34, last one.
Article 34. Moved, moved that the town vote to amend the Town of Kingston zoning bylaws regarding accessory dwelling as printed in the warrant. Okay, we, instead of me reading this description, I want to talk about ADUs. ADUs are accessory dwelling units. It's been a gem in our town. It's allowed families to stay together. Way back when, we had a, an in-law apartment bylaw type of thing, and in those cases, when the in-law would pass away, you couldn't use that property the way it was. You had to put it back the way it was, and it was a waste. So now we've developed this accessory dwelling units. They have, everybody was worried in the beginning, so we put a lot of checks and balances in there. Some of those, we were looking to remove all these years later. So accessory dwelling unit, you can add a limited size addition to your house, and you can use it for a relative, you can use it for a friend, you can use it for anybody you'd like. So if you build one of these for your in-laws or your parents and they pass away, now this can be used. You can rent it, but the owner of the property has to live in one of the units. And that's what has saved the worries of people in the past where they were worried that we're going to have a bunch of two families in town. It never happened, and this has been a wonderful thing. But one of the things that wasn't taken into account originally was that a lot of the lots in Kingston don't, are, they're not, what's the word I'm looking for? They're not conforming. Thank you. And because when they were built, that we didn't have zoning. We didn't have setbacks. We didn't have all these things. So a lot of those people are limited with what they can do, or they can't do anything at all. The other thing that's come to our attention is a lot of people that would like to take an outbuilding that they have. The other thing that's come to our attention is a lot of people that would like to take an outbuilding that they have, and they would like to use that as the accessory dwelling, instead of currently it has to be attached. And this allows people to use maybe an existing structure that's there, makes sense to us. We're trying to make it easier for families to stay together. One of the things that I'm most prideful about this is that the family unit is what makes a community. It's what makes a country. And so this allows families to stay together. It allows older people perhaps to have their money go into their kids' homes rather than a nursing home or some other facility. And it's really, really worked well. And so what we're trying to do now is just make it a little easier for many different buildings in town, homes in town, and expand the areas that it can be done. And I really do not see any problems with this. And it's, we've passed almost everyone that has come to us. However, one thing we didn't realize, there was many of them that didn't come to us because they couldn't conform to the bylaw. So this is what we're trying to do, clean this up. If anybody has any questions on here, Val, planners here, our building inspector in the zoning enforcement, Jason Silver is here.
I have a couple of questions, just to make sure, and I don't vote at town meeting, but just to make sure everyone understands the possibilities of this. On a single lot now, because you're getting rid of the one to three-year wait period, meaning the resident doesn't have to live there, so a builder could come in and take a single-family zoned and put two houses there, and then sell it to one owner, and he buys basically a two-family, correct?
He has to live in it.
He has to, correct. But a builder, because there's no wait time as you're trying to change it. A builder can go to a lot that's built for single-family before moving in and doing anything. He can then apply under this, so if he wants to build a four-hundred-square-foot house, he can then put a twelve-hundred-square-foot house on the same lot as long as he lives in one of the houses, and the other house he can use as rental property, correct?
That is correct. And we've had this for many years, and we've never had any complaints, and we have not had any problems.
But you, we are changing, there used to be a resident requirement to be on the property, and you're getting rid of that, correct?
No, we're not getting rid of that.
So you don't have to live on the property?
It has to be owner-occupied.
Correct.
Same as it did before.
It's be owner-occupied now, but if a builder goes on to build, he can do that, and that's...
He can build it and sell it, but the buyer has to occupy the property.
Correct.
Same as before.
Well, before, there's a one to three-year wait, though, correct?
Right. What we found was, there was a lot of properties that people were looking at, and they would like to add on for their parents. But what good is it if they're late seventies or eighties and now they got to wait three years to do it? So it just didn't make any sense. A lot of these precautions were put in here because, years ago, when we got this passed at town meeting, because people were worried about what could happen. So now, all these years later, we see what didn't happen, and we're trying to just make it better for the town.
Yes, sir. Jim Franklin, fifty-three, Winthrop Street. Just a, I guess I'd like a little bit of clarification. Would this affect at all the affordable housing numbers for the town? Would there be a benefit from that side?
No.
Has anyone looked into it from that perspective? I mean, my understanding is that if there's such units that they're supposed to count to a number, and are we doing everything that we can to capture all the accessory housing that might be out there or may come from something like this?
Hold on, hold on. You got to get to a microphone.
Good afternoon, Community Development Director, Jason Silva. Good afternoon, Jason Silva, Community Development Director. So I myself have worked with Val Massard, the planning board, and a lot of individuals in regard to this bylaw. In and of itself, though, units will not count directly towards the affordable housing count that relates to the state regulations, but this is real affordable housing. This is affordable housing for the individuals that come into my department every single day. They can't move out of Kingston because interest rate issues or variety issues. They can, however, let the in-laws or the related family members sell those homes, build something small, subordinate, meaning if you look and read through these regulations, the specific regulations are crafted in order to address every single one of the needs and concerns. Concerns. If you look at the minimum lot size on this, it's a twenty-thousand-square-foot lot size. Yes, it does eliminate a whole group of people that don't have twenty-thousand-square-foot lots, but we had to start somewhere and provide some belt and suspenders to this regulation so that we don't end up with a variety of unwelcome circumstances. I'm going to be the one that's enforcing this regulation. So as we went through this regulation, I was very critical of this, to set it up in such a way that we won't get complaints. I think Tom, and I reiterate the same thing, said, this is what people want. We don't want problems, and we want to try and help people. That's the whole intention of this bylaw. It does not allow for businesses to purchase these properties and take over people's properties. You have to live there. You have to live in one of the units. And again, the regulation creates a very small second living unit.
Yeah, so specifically, I, I'm not questioning this. I think it's a good thing, right? The question is whether or not the town's going to look into it, because I feel very strongly that the state is arbitrarily keeping some of these affordable housing unit numbers down to achieve a certain agenda, and I don't necessarily agree with that agenda. So what I would, what I would like to express, that I would like the town to be a little bit more proactive in fighting to get such things as this. If we're being, as a community, we're standing up and we're saying, this is true affordable housing, this is good for multi-generational situations. Why isn't it included in the numbers? I think we need to do more as a town to start speaking up for ourselves and advocating for ourselves. So my request to you guys would be to do so, right? To do everything that you can to get each one of these that we approve, and I hope we approve them, into the numbers, because I think it's important, and I think it needs to be validated on both sides, okay?
Doug?
Yeah, I would like to, I agree with that. And I would say this, Val, our planner, I would like her to speak quickly to this so everybody understands how much work she's trying to put in to get affordable counts up in every way we can. She also has worked very hard on this bylaw, so I'd like to thank her for that. Go ahead, Val.
You got to go to a microphone. There you go.
Just about the Affordable Housing Trust, we actually did meet with Gina Lasnamet, and we are, we did write a letter just stating that we are in favor of this, of this going through. So I just wanted to let you know.
Yes?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Valerie Massard, Town Planner. The town has invested, through the planning office, about a year's worth of work to update the inventory that the state has for all the affordable units in the community in terms of that forty-B, which is what you're referring to. With, this is a little bit different. The town does have ten percent requirement on anything six or more units has to be affordable under the state law. This is a little bit different in that it's more affordable. The going rate for any house that's put on the market right now is over six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the town of Kingston as of February. It's extremely expensive to live here. And what we're looking at trying to do with this accessory dwelling unit is create something that's more affordable, but that does not have to go out for a lottery. So that if you're going to have somebody living on your property, you have the control over that leasing agreement, that rental agreement that you might have, or that family arrangement that we were talking about. If you were to go with the forty-B process, it requires a lottery and advertising through a number of newspapers in the region, and that's not what we're trying to get at here. But this is definitely more affordable than what's on the market in Kingston.
Do we know how this will be taxed? So if you have a thirty-six hundred-square-foot house on a lot, and you add another house with three bedrooms as rental property, do you know how the town's going to tax that residential house?
The assessor's here, and I'm sure she could speak to that.
Welcome.
Hi, Maury Clark, Principal Assessor. We would assess it as a building it is, excuse me, it has a kitchen, a bathroom, bedrooms, the same as we do a single-home residence. The only thing, the land would not be included in the assessment.
Thank you. Yes? A little closer to the mic, please.
Janet Stanford, fifty-three, Evergreen Street. I'm not really against it, except I just worry about abutters. Would there be a hearing? And would the abutters have any say in this matter?
All of these are done by special permit, so all abutters are notified, and there's a public hearing done. This is another layer of protection. So abutters and neighbors get to have their say on different things. And that's helped a lot in the past when we've had these hearings. People would say, you know, that they're going to have more cars in the driveway, would you be able to put a fence here, or this? And we try to accommodate everybody involved, and it is a public hearing, and it's, abutters are notified, yes.
Thank you. I'll just add that it's a supermajority vote, four out of the five. Planning board members have to support it. As we've had this on the books for several years, we have six units across town that have been approved. In Plymouth, they made this by right recent, at their town meeting, which is, what is happening across the state is there's a lot of towns that are moving towards making these easier, making these by right. The governor's looking at making these by right. We want to maintain these as a special permit so that there is the ability for the abutters to speak up and so that there is a supermajority requirement.
Yeah, we never want this to be by right. The state just keeps jumping into towns like us and imposing things that we don't want. So we'll fight that as long as we can.
Would anyone else like to be heard? No? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I just have one question. Carol Boussey, twenty-nine Wapping Road. If, in the case of an abutter or a neighbor, having a serious objection to one of these being built, would a hearing be just that, a venting session? Or would there be some way of the neighboring people having their opinions actually taken into account and acted on? Because we went to a hearing about the bridge on Elm Street. We went to a big hearing, everybody turned out, and we were told afterwards that it would have no bearing on what actually happened.
So is your question, if all the abutters object, can they still get it through with a special permit?
I guess that's my question.
Can anyone answer that?
It's possible, but keep in mind, you need four out of five members to vote in favor. So we have had a couple instances where the neighbor's testimony swayed more than one person not to vote in favor. And also, the other thing is, if we only have four members available that night, now it has to be four out of four, which has happened. So one of the times when they did not pass, there was four members, one voted against because of concerns with neighbors. But we look really closely at the requests of the neighbors. Sometimes they're just ridiculous, and other times, they make sense. Like, we had one where the homeowners that were against this project wanted a bond to be placed on the road while they did the work, because it was a private road. And I said, well, lady, to the woman, you know, saying this, I said, you just did a big addition on your house. Did you post a bond? You know, so we looked deeply into it, but I think we're, it does not, there's never been a problem.
Yes.
Doc McFarland, seventeen Wapping Road. As a senior, I, my house is too big for me, and I've been trying to find a way to build a smaller house on my property. And so far until this, I couldn't do it. And I think, looking over what's there, I can. And I have someone who wants to build my house, buy my house, a relative, and this would be ideal. If this works out, it's absolutely fabulous, so...
And you could save, because you don't need high ceilings.
I thought when we opened this meeting that no one was supposed to say anything negative.
She's one of my favorites in town. I always tease her.
That's a hard...
When she arrived today, she thought, everybody always says, here comes trouble, when they see Doc coming. I didn't say that. She thought it was going to, I said, how's the weather down there?
Okay. Last one.
My last comment, if I may, Mr. Moderator, is just that during the special permit process, and I've done hundreds of these in Plymouth and in Duxbury and here in Kingston, the abutters do have standing in terms of speaking up about what they need. It can often affect the conditions of the permit, and it's a very important process. It's not a yes or a no necessarily always, but there's always room for improving a project. And when there's reasonable requests, and those can be accommodated, they are incorporated into the permit.
Yeah, let's move it. Anyone else? No? Okay. All those in favor of Article thirty-four as printed in, look at that, I already packed up. As printed in the warrant, favorable votes by the, sorry, incompetence. Favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, five-zero Board of Selectmen and six-zero for the Planning Board. All those in favor of Article thirty-four as printed in the warrant, say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I make motion thirty-five? Motion to adjourn?
Do I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Cheers.